Five, four. Hope you get it in three.
Good evening. I would like to open our school committee meeting on Thursday, March 20th, 2014. And ask directly my leadings in the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right? My chair, it's between legs.
Exactly.
All right, so we want to be consent agenda. We can recede the meeting notes from our March 13 meeting. Want to pay bills?
Don't make a motion to accept a consent agenda.
In minutes?
Second.
Would second it, all those who pay with it, give me discussion. All those who pay with it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Neatness? It's time we open up the interest in citizens.
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we'll move on.
War 'em out last week with budget.
We have some presentations tonight of our mid-year school improvement plan. Presentations by our principals. And if we're okay with that?
Sure. We're going to start with Chaker Lane this evening. The mid-year SIPs, we do them very differently than we do the final SIPs in June. And tonight's just an opportunity for the principals to give you a brief update on progress today. So they've enclosed a summary in their packages that I'm sure you've perused. You'll notice that the SIPs are aligned to our Vision 2020 Plan with our five strands: Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Professional Development, Climate and, I mean, Community Communication, and Culture, Climate, and Technology. So they align their plans by actually aligning them to the Vision 2020 Plan. So we have a total streamlining of everything going back to our Vision 2020 Plan. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Principal Farady.
Hi, everyone. It's always nice to be here tonight and talk about one of my favorite subjects, Chaker Lane School and everything that we do because I think we do a fantastic job. I'm so very, very proud of the staff and the energies that they put in to teaching our students every day. Little bit about the format that you see in front of you. And the format is consistent across our four schools. You'll see the left-hand side of each column, action items and the results of what we've done so far in our school improvement plans. And on the right-hand side, just refers to what the strategic goals are and what the objectives are that we've worked on as well. First item that you'll see under Chaker Lane, it has to do with our exploration of writing and language arts. One of the things that was a goal in our school improvement plan this year was to have a look at our writing program and do some assessments as to where we are, what areas we could improve in, and actually begin the selection of perhaps a new writing program at our schools. That goal is in alignment with the Russell Street School improvement plan as well. As we began to talk about that, investigate it, we felt that maybe it was time to look at our entire language arts program, meaning our reading program as well. So we have had several robust discussions about that at our Elementary Curriculum Council meetings. We've actually, they've been overseeing the investigation and we've since formed a subcommittee with teacher representatives from grades pre-K to five to really have a hard look at what we're doing in language arts, which would include writing as well. So we're a little bit delayed in that item, but I think that the delay is going to give us the opportunity to really do some more intensive reflection as to what we're doing in language arts and are there areas that we need to improve in across the board in language arts to be able to also align with the common core. That's one goal, but the other is to make sure that we're providing our students with the most consistent, robust instruction that we can provide them. We have had some writing program professional development at both Russell Street and at Chaker Lane so far this year. We had a consultant come in and do an overall presentation with staff on October 9th and also do some individual work with teams of teachers on October 22nd, 23rd, and January 29th as well. Focus on that has been on looking at both we're doing, oh. And they had me muted. A lot of people like to mute me, of course, any day, but this isn't really the time to be doing that. The focus was on both fiction and nonfiction writing as well and more focusing on student response to writing actually than more writing personal narratives as well. Staff reviews from that were very, very good. We've been looking at our assessments, both in math and writing so far this year. We did do a revision of our trimester writing prompts because we really felt it was time to bring them into more currency with what was going on in the world than some of the writing prompts we had been using before. We also have aligned our math assessments for, to align with the common core as well for our trimesters. We continue to hold data meetings in the area of reading and language arts, consisting of all the people that you see below. And those data meetings, I think I should explain a little bit about what happens at those data meetings. It's not only a review of where students are, but it's also a time that the staff sits down. And for those students who may not be responding to intervention to the goal, to meet their goals, it's also a time that we sit and reflect on those interventions and what changes we need to make. And we meet regularly, about every six weeks, on those students. And those students that are receiving Tier Two and Tier Three interventions in the area of reading from RTI are also progress monitored every couple of weeks by the staff to see how they're doing. So when we sit down at those data meetings, we really have some current and actual performance data as to how those students are doing and how they're responding to intervention. And that's something that has become a culture of the way we do things in reading at Chaker Lane. And it's also starting to spread over to the area of math. And in math this year, one of the goals of the staff has been to implement a skill-based instructional model in the area of mathematics, just as we do in reading. And if you go into a classroom during a math lesson right now, what you will see is there is certainly some whole group math instruction that happens for the first 15 or 20 minutes of math, but then students are breaking down into work-centered groups in mathematics, just as they are, have been in reading for the past four or five years. That's a major inroad, and it was exciting to see that be a goal of the staff. It certainly was a place I wanted them to go, but we're handling a lot of initiatives right now. And it was exciting to see them pick up that initiative on their own and to roll with that. And I think it's really having an effect and improvement in what we're doing in the area of math. One of the other things we implemented this year was a 35-minute Symphony Math Lab for all students, grades transitional through grades two. So every student goes down to the lab for 35 minutes in addition to their other lab time and spends that time working on Symphony Math. And that program is differentiated according to students' abilities. And it's been amazing to see students progress in using Symphony Math, but we're also looking forward to, when we do our end-of-the-year assessments, is what improvements have students made overall in the area of math due to our implementation of that program. And that program has had a dual benefit for us. Not only a focus on mathematics, but in doing that, we've also provided coverage for teachers during that time. So we've been able to construct our schedule so teams of three teachers are able to meet at least once a week and have some common planning time. And that's something we haven't been able to do at Chaker Lane in quite a while. So that's been kind of a side benefit for us. Not a goal of our school improvement plan, but certainly something that was needed to have happen at Chaker Lane. And teachers during those meetings are looking at what they're doing for common assessments, sharing ideas for what they're doing in curriculum, and looking at technology as well. One of the things that you're going to see throughout this, and I think I'm most proud of this, is the professional development that we've been providing in all of our schools, but at Chaker Lane specifically this year. One of our goals was an increased use of types and frequency of technology that was being integrated into instructional practice. Now, that's a great goal, but it doesn't happen by itself. You have to be providing teachers with the means and the professional development to be able to do that. So if you were to cut in to Chaker Lane on any Tuesday morning, about 7:45 or so, you'd see about 15, 18, sometimes only 12, but 12 to 18 teachers down in our technology lab doing what we call Tech Tuesdays. And Tech Tuesday professional development is provided by our instructional tech assistant, Julie Lord, and also Nancy Maurice, our technology leader in the building. And you can see in front of you what those Tuesdays, some of what those Tuesdays, some of them are continued on to another page, but some of what happens on those Tuesdays at Chaker Lane and the subjects that have been approached during those sessions. We also have, since, we also need professional development sometimes to be differentiated. We also have terrific Thursdays, which happen. Those are really remedial classes for those people who couldn't quite get it on Tuesday morning so they have another bite at the apple where staff is available in the tech lab for them to provide more individualized or Tier Two instruction on what was covered on Tuesday. We also have a host of other, you'll see on the second page, there's a host of other site-based professional development opportunities that have happened at Chaker Lane this year. We've developed a pretty good menu of differentiated site-based professional development for staff to participate in, and that's open to all staff. It's open to teachers as well as teaching assistants. We have a site-based professional development committee that actively meets each month, comprised of representatives from all the grade levels and special education as well. And you can see underneath there the menu of professional development offerings that we've done a lot of them so far, and some of, we've done a lot of them so far this year, and some of them are yet to come. One of the great things about these professional development sessions is that they're led by staff who have expertise in that particular area. So it's really, says something a lot about the collaboration that happens at Chaker Lane. We've also provided training and staff, training and support for staff who participated in the responsive classroom training over at Russell Street during the summer months in the area of community and communication. I think our website's improved. I think our weekly newsletter is improved. At least that's the feedback that I get from parents. The vast majority of teachers have now created blogs. So a parent can go online at any given time and see what's actually happened, happening that day, that month, in their child's classroom. And that's been a great, great communication tool for parents. And we received lots of positive feedback on that. And we're also regularly using Twitter to communicate daily happenings at the schools as well. Now, in the area also in community and communication, we have provided several professional development opportunities for staff so they will be able to learn how to create blogs and use them effectively. And for those who already have them, be able to enhance what they already have. And you can see those listed on that sheet as well. Climate and culture, we have spent some time updating, along with Detective Fernandez, updating our crisis plan. As you know, several of us were trained in Alice in January after we got back from the holiday break. And we're in the process right now of conducting Alice training sessions for all of our staff. And the Chaker Lane training is scheduled for April 17. Also, climate and culture, if you haven't seen it, drive by, take a look at our new preschool program on the upper level. Really looks terrific. Students haven't been able to enjoy it as much this winter as I wish they could have due to the cold and the snow, but they'll be out there again, I hope, in another week or so because that snow is surely starting to melt. We've been doing an ongoing review of our HART program and incorporating our HART program into responsive classroom as well. And the two really mesh quite nicely. Also, under technology, we have had that goal for increased type and frequency of technology that's integrated into our instructional practices. And you'll see listed there some of the ways that we're using technology in our classrooms. And below that, we also had a goal to provide students and staff with appropriate technological equipment. The items that you see listed there below, the additional iPads, Apple TVs, more document cameras, and tripods. A lot of those came from the generosity of our PTA and fundraising efforts. Some of it came from grants, and the rest of it came from other fundraising efforts that we've done at Chaker Lane as well. So we really feel, I was talking to a group of second grade, first graders the other day about using technology responsively in the classroom because even sometimes in first grade, things happen. I'm not talking about anybody surfing the web inappropriately, but sometimes our more sophisticated students think it's a lot of fun to move apps from one folder to another folder and just play around, play around with things in general. And I was reminding them that two years ago, the students sitting in first grade didn't have any of these tools, didn't have any of these benefits. And they were really surprised to hear that, which is, I think, says something about the way we've truly gone about integrating technology into what we do every day. So that's what we've been doing so far. I'm looking forward to the spring. I continue to be impressed with the staff at Chaker Lane and the way they undertake initiatives and in the way they find initiatives for themselves to undertake to make it better for students at school. Questions?
Awesome. Thanks, Rich.
Sure. You talked about data meetings and I just think this is-
Now they took the mic away from me altogether.
That's great because now I just get to talk on and on.
Then we can just talk.
You talked about data meetings, and that's so important. I want to emphasize this for the public because I think we've been talking a lot about professional development, particularly regarding the half-day issue and how that's inconvenient for parents. And it surely is, but there's also so much good that we can only do using that professional development. And basically, everything you just presented would be included in professional development. But I want to mention the data teams in particular because if you didn't have the time to do that and analyze the data, you would just be going through the same motions here, after year, after year, with no clue whether it was working or not.
And students wouldn't have that immediate, you know, I mean, six weeks is a pretty short period of time. And to be able to do that immediate change in what your approach is to instruction based on the data that you've collected is what it should be in schools.
And it's great that we're moving in that direction, that we're using that time effectively. So when we talk about professional development, I don't think, I don't think anyone should be under the belief that we have too much of it because we're using the time we have very effectively. And every tool, it sounds like, we're using in all of our schools, you know, goes to use and makes the time we have in the classroom much more effective.
It does.
And so I just wanted to compliment you on that. And perhaps with the students moving the app from one folder to another, go back to the old, if you move something, just remember to put it back. True if it's an app.
True.
Thanks, Alex. Also at the moment, thank you.
Just a couple of comments here. I like the new format. I guess that's a compliment to the architect of the format, as well as the presenters that are coming up here. It gives a clear reading of the actions. You know, one thing, maybe, and I'll see it probably more in the final readout, is the effects of all these actions. I'll be looking forward to that there. One comment, you made a comment on the differentiated instruction, I think in math in particular there. And it's kind of clear to me how the teacher can manage that within the grade that year. What are you doing about the transition from that year to the following year and the pickup, you know, from where they left off to where the new teacher at the next grade needs to start at? I just was wondering.
All of those, I'll use, I'll say the data reports. All of the information that we have available moves up to the next grade level in the student's portfolio to the next, to the next teacher. There's also opportunities, of course, for teachers to have conversations between themselves as well. But all of the information that we gather on students moves up in the portfolio. One of the things, one of the next, and I cringe at even saying this because I picture my staff watching this and thinking, oh, my God, what's he doing now? What are the next steps? In reading, we have a database. So someone can go on to that web-based program and they can look at exactly where a student was, what interventions they received, who provided those interventions, and move ahead with that. We're not there with math yet. One of the things that we have to do, and we have to do this, I believe, as a district, is to have a database available where all of our information can go into. So a teacher, when they receive a kid the next year, is able to just click on that student's name and see everything that was there and see the progress that that student made, which is what our reading-based program does, as well as where they were when they finished the year. But all the information right now is, does go into a portfolio.
Thank you. Could I just follow up on that? Does that include the DI as well as all the other data?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got more comments. First of all, I think the way that you all collaborate with one another is fantastic.
It's a good team.
It is a good team, and I want to commend all of you on that. Let's see. Can't read my own writing. I had some comments on the data collection and the data meetings as well, but Alex hit on that pretty succinctly. One of the things that really stood out to me was when you're talking about the common planning time, it's tough. I know your staff is running on a really tight schedule. Getting the kids into the gym and, you know, from the CAF and to recess. It's tough to steal those minutes away versus the other schools.
I also should mention that every grade level meets on their own at lunchtime, once a week as well.
Right. And I think it's great that you found a creative way to find some common planning time through that math, the math lab. And it's touching every kid. So again, I like when you guys come up with these creative ideas to create opportunities to find time. And I put that out to the whole administration because I know that there's some guidance involved. And again, the collaboration, the teamwork is great there. And the Tech Tuesdays, the fact that these are staff-led is, again, hat off to the staff, you know, give them our thanks. Tech Tuesdays, terrific Thursdays. I'm waiting for Fantastic Fridays.
Last year, we had Fantastic Fridays, but we had to move it to scheduling to Thursday. Fridays are always fantastic.
I like Mondays. The only question, the Alice training, I was taking notes when you mentioned the date of the Alex, Alice training. Is it April 4th?
April 17th.
Seventeenth?
It's an L A B D's day.
Okay. All right. But we've gotten a lot of information, a lot of training on Alice, but it might be nice to see what the staff's going through as well. So I just, I wanted to put in my calendar, just as an opportunity for me to attend as well and see what they're going through. I think that's really it. I appreciate your time. And again, the format is nice. And I'm probably going to say that after each of you that I love the collaboration that you guys, not just the four of you, but the admin team as a whole, as well as the staff. I appreciate that. Question that I'd be remiss if I didn't ask it because PJ's not here. Is there anything that you need at this point? I mean, it's mid-year.
Well, he only asked that one after they're all done. You're way ahead of the curve.
Do I have to be like mini-me in this already? Call me CJ.
I'm not, I am going to answer that question. And usually, I don't dive into that. I was saying, I was writing my annual yearbook letter today. And one of the things I was doing in there was thanking, I did in there, was thank the town and the PTA and the parents for their generosity in supporting everything we do. And, you know, you saw some examples of equipment that we bought through fundraising efforts this year. There's all, we're in a good place. We're in a very good place at Chaker Lane. There's always room for more. If we're going ahead and we're looking at what we're going to be doing with English Language Arts and/or writing, we will need, you know, support for that. Been talking with Kelly about that. That's not, that's not a surprise, Kelly and Dr. Daniel. We need your continued support. We need the continued support of the town and the school committee for the initiatives that we're undertaking and maintaining the staffing that we have and just giving us that continual support so we can continue to move ahead and do what's best for kids.
Thanks, Rich. I assume that Mr. Vazilo is up next, or?
Yes, he is.
Good evening. Like Mr. Farady, it's always my pleasure to come before the school committee to talk about Russell Street School. I do have to say- to talk about Russell Street School. I do have to say that Rich mentioning his yearbook letter has totally thrown me off my game, because that moves it to the top of my-
It had to be done by yesterday, so I didn't-
Mine has to be done by tomorrow, so I have to remember that. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the faculty and staff at Russell Street School. As you can imagine, it's been an extremely busy year, one of the busiest in my career, whether it be state mandates, district initiatives, or faculty-focused efforts. It's been very, very busy. We're talking about edeval, PARC, educator goals, alignment to the Massachusetts Frameworks and Common Core, programmatic pilots, and an increased focus on achievement. So I think that, I want to acknowledge publicly, that it's been a very busy year for educators across the state and a very busy year for educators in Littleton. And I want to commend the work that our staff is doing across the district and particularly at Russell Street. So I want to say that first and foremost, that there's lots of work going on. And what I'll talk about tonight just scratches the surface of what folks are doing. And there's lots of great things going on. I think Dr. Branko and Dr. Harrington will agree with me that preparing and implementing the PARC pilot has been a big undertaking, bigger than we may have anticipated when we heard about it. And that is part of our school improvement plan. And we've worked diligently with our staffs and the central office to roll that out. I'll leave that at that, but it has been a major undertaking for us, both at the central office level and the building level and the technology level. And thanks very much to Mr. McEckern for helping us with that. But it has been a major undertaking. And hopefully, it will go off without hitch, but it has been more than we probably anticipated when we first spoke about it. Lots of great things going on at Russell Street. And one of the things I really look forward to is coming back to you in the spring to roll out a brand-new report card at Russell Street that will be vertically aligned. I think when I got here, one of the things I heard in my transition plan, both from parents and from teachers, was that the report card needed lots of work. And I concurred with that when I took a look at it. We've had a team meeting for a good part of the year to align our report cards to the new Massachusetts Frameworks and the Common Core, to make it vertically aligned from grades three to five, to make sure it's aligned to the Massachusetts Frameworks, to really take a look at what our characteristics for, characteristics that support learning look like in that document, to put some supporting documents together for parents to make sure they understand it. Those documents are all in draft form now. I expect them ready mid-spring, and I expect to be back with a presentation of that material for the committee. And we're pretty proud of that work that's going on. So we need some time to get it out to the greater Russell Street staff and faculty for feedback and to make some changes. But I think that that will be great work that's completed this year and ready to roll out for the first trimester next fall, after we have a parent forum, you know, assuming all goes well this spring with approval here. We've, this year, implemented new monthly at-risk learning meetings at Russell Street, which means in addition to the meetings Rich talked about, which are regular grade-level data meetings, which we look at in reading, and I won't sort of reiterate that, but the same model, RTI model, that Russell Street and Chaker Lane have used previously is going on at Russell Street. In addition to that, we're meeting monthly with a school-based data team, which consists of myself and both our reading and math interventionists. And we're meeting with our grade-level teams monthly to take a risk, take, excuse me, take a look at at-risk learners. And so our goal there is to look at any student, whether they be a typical learner, a learner with a non-typical learning profile, or ultimately, an advanced learner that maybe we're not challenging enough, and take a look at how we can make sure that that student's learning experience is as strong as it could be. So that's an experience that we're sort of growing. We've had two or three of those meetings this year. We'll continue that next year. And we're fine-tuning that process. But we're excited about the idea that it's important to us that every student is growing at the best trajectory they can be. And so I think that that is a process that we're pretty excited about at Russell Street. And resources are being diverted in that direction, both with personnel and with materials. And so that's something that I'll continue to talk about, but we're excited about that. Rich alluded to the fact that there's significant professional development going on, and that goes back to my first comment, significant initiatives going on that require training. And I actually was remiss in forgetting that we had two more professional developments that took place in grade-level teams on Common Core Writing that Rich had reminded me of when he was speaking. But you can see by that list, I won't read them to you, that there is significant, varied professional development going on during our early release days. One of the things I'm most proud of, again, that came out of my transition meetings when I got here, from both parents and faculty, was the fact that folks felt like students at Russell Street School would very much benefit from a social competency program. We talked about that last spring. I've mentioned it to the committee before. We funded that program through a variety of sources. The district came up with some money, PTAs came up with some money. It was very challenging to put together, both from the perspective of staff members put a week of their time together during the summer. It was expensive. But I think everybody realized how important it was for the students at Russell Street School to have this type of program in place. We had a full week of training in the summer for our professional teaching staff and our professional special education staff and our special subject staff. We rolled this program out in September. We then had a one-day training for everyone else that worked at Russell Street School, all the way from the kitchen staff to the custodial staff, to the office staff, to the teaching assistants. So every single person that works at Russell Street School, excuse me, Russell Street School has been trained in this program, unless they couldn't come to that week-long training in the summer, in which case they're looking for another week-long training this summer that they can't attend if they had a conflict. And I can tell you that we saw results from this program within three weeks of the start of the school year. I would walk down the hall, and I alluded to this in previous school committee meetings, and students would stop me in the hall to greet me and engage me. And the culture and climate that has changed at Russell Street School from the implementation of this program is palpable. So it was an expensive program. It took significant training, but it was extremely valuable, valuable for the culture and climate. And I think that if you talk to students, if you talk to teachers, if you talk to parents, you can see the change that's taken place. It's tough to quantify. We've talked about, can we do a survey? It's actually in our school improvement plan that we'll do a survey to try to quantify the change for students. And we're continuing to talk about how we might do that. But I can tell you that I can feel the change. So it's been time well spent. It's been money well spent. And you can see the difference and feel the difference as you walk the halls. And I think that you would feel that if you came to visit. We reinstituted the after-school program, after-school club program, excuse me, which was a big parent concern when I got here, that the after-school club program at Russell Street was cut the year before I got here. And that's gone fabulously after the hitch that I talked about at school committee, that the overwhelming response of students who are interested in participating caused us a little bit of a logistical challenge on how we made sure that everybody got an experience. So we had to take a step back and figure out, how could we make sure that everyone participated in a club? Next year, we'll have some changes. I think that we'll have a club brochure that has students rank order their interests from one, two, and three, so that we can sort of make sure that we know priority interest from students. We do have a limit in funding as to how many clubs we can have. And so at some point, there is a limit as to how many students we can accommodate in the club program. But what our faculty did do was they cut their, the length of their clubs, either into halves or into trimesters, so that they could accommodate more students. And we were able to, this year, accommodate every single student who was interested in a club. Hopefully, that will continue to be the case. We would never want to exclude a student. But that's something to always be thinking about as far as the funding of clubs goes. But that was something, when I got here, that was surprisingly concerning for parents, in the sense that I didn't expect that as a new principle, but that was, from what I heard from parents, one of their biggest concerns, was that the after-school club program isn't here anymore, and what can you do about that? So I think that was a big win for the district, to be able to put the after-school club program back in place. The final thing I'll talk about that has gone extremely well this year, and again, I want to tip my hat to the faculty at Russell Street, is we've put together a committee model that's very much like a professional learning committee model at Russell Street, where every professional staff member who works full-time at Russell Street School sits on a committee, whether it be the report card committee, the mathematics committee, the literacy committee, or the community outreach committee. And each of those committees ties directly back to our school improvement plan. And Mr. DeCoste alluded to the fact that at Chaker Lane and Russell Street, it's tough to get common planning time, and so it's tough to meet with folks and to move the program forward. And so we have carved some time aside for those committees to meet on a monthly basis. And then some groups have had subcommittees that have met on their own time for PDPs. And so each of those groups has had the autonomy to move forward, as long as it's within the school improvement plan, to move forward on their own direction. They each have a chair. Obviously, the report card, I chair the report card committee, and the end game of that is the report card and the products that I just alluded to. The literacy committee this year, their big outcome will come this spring. And it's a big, major reading initiative for Russell Street School that we'll be launching in the next month or so, that will be challenging students school-wide as a community to read a certain number of books, tipping, ruining the secret a little bit, to read a certain number of books, nonfiction and fiction books, and be making recommendations. So that will be coming out. The math committee's been working on alignment of the everyday math curriculum to the Massachusetts Frameworks and the Common Core. And our community outreach committee is very much focused on the feedback that I got when I got here, that at times when parents leave Chaker Lane and come to Russell Street School, they feel a bit of a disconnection, that it's not necessarily the same sort of warm and fuzzy feeling that they have at Chaker Lane, and they don't feel as connected. So community outreach is working on two of our school improvement action items. And those are, one, to provide evening activities for parents that are educational in nature, where parents could come without students and learn about things we're doing in our school. One of them that we're already talking about for next fall is to have parents come and learn specifically about responsive classrooms, to participate in a morning meeting, to, you know, act like a student and go through some of the pieces of responsive classroom as students do. You know, we've talked about having students come, excuse me, parents come and participate in learning how to use Google Docs and those types of things. So educational opportunities for parents. So that committee will be focusing on that, as well as celebrating the work that students are doing at Russell Street School. So this spring, that group is working on a math and literacy night that will be happening later this spring to celebrate the work that's happening in classrooms around math and literacy. So the goal there is to target making sure that our community is welcome in the building, both from a celebration of the work students are doing, as well as providing an educational service for parents in areas that may come from parents' suggestion. We've talked to both our PTA, as well as our school council, about what are some areas that you've heard from parents that they may appreciate some educational programs on. So those, these communities will not only happen this year, but the same folks will remain on them next year. And the school improvement plan is a three-year plan. So we'll be moving these forward. And those groups will stay together and continue to work long-term. So I think that that model is working very well right now. I think folks appreciate it. I think it's created some engagement. And I think that we will see the school continue to move forward with that sort of empowerment for those groups to be able to make decisions for the greater team within the structure of our school improvement plan.
Thank you. Any comments?
Just one. There's so many initiatives going on, so many improvement plans, and so many areas to improve there. Could you just maybe, not in detail, just touch on, you know, so in our, last fall, we got the MCAS results, and there's a list of improvement planned actions that are not directly tied to the school improvement plan, but it's yet another set of improvement initiatives. Could you talk about maybe just how you're dovetailing all of these together here? Or are they actually all on separate tracks?
Yeah, I would say they're separate to some degree. I would say that if you asked a faculty member that question, they would say they're on overload. You know, if you honestly asked a teacher, how does it feel right now? I think they would honestly say to you, I feel overwhelmed to some degree. So I think it's my job and my colleagues' job to make sure that we're not letting that get too overwhelming and that we're keeping view of the big picture. And that the big picture at my level, and I say this to parents and students all the time, is that students love school and that students want to be self-learners and self-growers, and that we don't get so squished by achievement and this and that and initiatives that we lose sort of the big picture. So I do think that they're separate to some degree, because the nature of our work is, we get MCAS scores and we get held to the standard of how we're going to move everyone to a proficient level on MCAS. And so we create these improvement plans for that. And we have the school improvement plan, in which case we look at the broad nature of improvement, and we come up with all of those. And then we sit down as a team, and we start creating, you know, where the rubber hits the road, action plans. And so in some places, they overlap, and some places, they don't. And so I think that your point is a valid one. We sit as an administrative team, and, you know, at times, the superintendent will say something, you know, what's everybody doing right now on XYZ? And one of us might think to ourselves, holy smokes, you know, we got nine initiatives. I don't know how, where that one fits in the nine initiatives work, and I won't say one out loud. You know what I mean? But so I think your point's a really good one. We try to intertwine them. We try to have a cohesive mode going forward. But I think you can get the hamster and the wheel syndrome. And none of us want that. We want it to be about the kids and about a love of learning and about empowerment of teaching and learning. So I think that there's a danger in too many initiatives at once, which is why I try to say, here's our big rocks right now, and why I try to say to our staff, listen, we have a lot of big successes going on right now. Don't feel like we're chasing all these things that we haven't necessarily got to yet. This is a whole lot of great that's happened between September and March. But your point's a good one. We need to always go back to those and say, hey, we said we were going to work on these things. Are we continuing to do that? You know, it's a time issue at some point, and trying to juggle all the balls.
And I guess just to, you know, the only thought that comes to mind is, I guess, this is the end of this SIP plan this year, right? You'll be forming a new one, new three-year plan next year, or is this the-
No, this is just the half-year one.
Or just year one. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you step back some of the SIP plan a little bit broader to cover the other things so that the initiatives naturally intertwine a little bit more?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not an MCAS improvement initiative and a SIP improvement initiative and a MEAS improvement initiative?
Yeah, that's-
We do talk in broader contexts, but at the same time, when it comes to a presentation like this, they've, as a team, we've decided that we really need to make sure that we're aligned. So sometimes the discussions are more specific than they otherwise would be. Achieve 3000 is really taking a close look at MCAS performance at Russell Street School. And the teachers are fully on board with that. And we're seeing, we're seeing some good things-
I apologize.
-that are happening. And there's a lot of data analysis just in Achieve 3000 alone that they're looking at. The real trick is, though, is to manage the initiatives that you have. And sometime, chunking them is one of the best ways to do that.
No, I just wanted to recognize, I know there's a lot of things going on simultaneously here. It's hard to see how we're going to continue to make progress on all of them simultaneously, but everybody expects us to make progress on them all simultaneously.
Well, and this year was a big social-emotional year. We rolled responsive classroom out with the idea that the research is showing us that when you really work hard on the social-emotional growth of students, that the academics improve as well. And so it was really important to me. For instance, you know, we've been, when we have morning meeting, we've been diligent, that no one has pulled out a morning meeting. Every student at Russell Street School participates in morning meeting. There's no special ed services. There's no ELL services. There's nothing happens during that time, that we are dedicated to that happening. And so, you know, again, sort of to that point, you can only get the whole team 100% on board for so many things at one time. And so that's not to say that we're not on board, that MCAS is really important.
I'm not saying nobody's on board.
Yeah.
Can you name the nine initiatives?
No, kidding.
There's more than nine.
The only thing I would say is an extension of what we've just been talking about is, I think this is just a natural repercussion of the way we've changed how the buildings go about their business, where it's much more of a collaborative thing. It's much more data-driven. There are set goals, whereas, you know, as recently as even, you know, nine years ago or 10 years ago, sometimes each classroom was its own little island, or each grade was its own little island, and some teams did things a little different than others. And we've tried to get away from that, I think for the benefit. And I think that you hit it on it right, Scott, when you said, it's your role as the managers to help your staff not get caught up in the forest for the tree, you're getting caught up in the trees of the forest. And the other thing that I would caution is, is that while it's important to look at the data and think about initiatives- and think about initiatives that can help close certain gaps, I think we all agree that and understand that our improvement will be gradual, that there are no lightning bolts that are going to come out of the sky and fix any one thing at any one time. And that's not a good way to try to do it. That as long as we're focused on gradual improvement over time, that these initiatives will come together. They'll get smoothed out, and at the end of the, some period of time, or much, you know, sometimes a longer horizon than some people might, you know, my kid's in third grade. I care about third grade right now today. Okay, yeah, but there's going to be a lot of other third graders coming in behind. So, we're, you know, we're looking for that, that longer time horizon. I think it will smooth out. I think as we get used to conducting business this way, in another five or six years, we won't be having this kind of concern. It'll get smoothed out. I think we'll be better at it.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, actually. And I've said this a million times, and I've said it to the staff, and I've said it here. Having been in several places, I've never worked in a school with a more dedicated, harder-working staff. And my biggest fear is things like single data points, like MCAS scores, will damage morale because that's when we start having faculty members feel like, "No matter what I do, this is the one way we're judged", and people think our, you know, we're not successful, that school's not good. Because the staff at Russell Street is by far the hardest-working, most collaborative, most student-focused staff with whom I've ever had the pleasure of working. So, I appreciate those comments, and I think they will appreciate them as well. And I agree with you. I think we are making progress, and I think there is no magic bullet. I think it's, you know, it's going to take some time, and I think it will come.
There is a magic bullet, and I think surely by taking on so many different initiatives, we're trying to get at a lot of what that magic bullet would be addressing. Sort of, you can't have just one solution. You have to have many. And I think that's the approach that many of us have when it comes to education, and I think it's a good approach. On the new report cards, sounds really exciting.
Yeah.
Just, I know you'll give us a longer presentation about this probably this spring. Characteristics that support learning, is that more sort of what RICH is doing in terms of standards-based grading? What does that include?
So, the, there will be, the subject areas are all standards-based directly from the Massachusetts Frameworks that are tied to the Common Core. Characteristics that support learning will replace the traditional behavior section of the report card. And we spent significant time in committee talking about what to call that section. And we ultimately came up with the title Characteristics That Support Learning. The first two or three of them are more traditional behaviors. And I don't have them off the top of my head, but for instance, follows directions. Or the next five are more 21st century skills. Perseveres, collaborates in groups, things that we'd really like to see our students doing that are going to position them successfully for career, college readiness, career and life skills. And so, that's why we called them, rather than, we feel like the term "behavior" carries with it a characteristic that is somewhat traditional, and we expect you to conform. And that's not what we want that section of the report card to indicate. We really want it to look at the skills students need, students need to be successful for college and career readiness. And so, that's what that section will look at. And it will also be numerically standards-based, and it will reflect, in nicer language, you know, "all the time, sometimes", or "needs significant support", or something like that.
Right. I just wanted to point out that I was just going through my Pursuit of Excellence Task Force notes, and we were, we're looking at a discussion that's been happening recently has been, "What should report cards look like?", and that's, sounds very relevant to what we're doing. And I'm very excited to see.
Yeah, we're really excited about it. This is, Russell Street's been looking at a new report card for years. And this is when I came on board in my transition plan. This was one of the top two, a social competency program, and a report card was in the top three or two or three items. So, we're very excited to bring this forward and to present it to the committee and to rule it out to parents in the fall. I think it will be a big, big improvement for the teachers and for the parents and students at Russell Street. So, we're excited to bring that in April to the rest of the team, and hopefully here. I'll work with the superintendent on a date, probably in May or June, to bring it here to the committee.
Excellent. The other notes I had, just regarding the, looking at at-risk learners regularly, I think that's another great thing we do. Is there, this is a new program, so anecdotally, is there, how do you think it's going? Pretty well, sort of?
Yeah, so interestingly, we've probably, I think we've either met two months or three months at-risk learners. And so, this is part of one of my new educator evaluation goals, is to be looking at at-risk learners. And we've created a database, and meeting monthly is one of my goals. And so, we're working the kinks out because we don't have that much, time is an issue, you know, at the elementary schools. And so, we, I have to balance the time teachers spend out of the classroom talking about students with the time they spend in the classroom teaching students. And so, that's the challenge. And so, right now, we spend monthly an hour and a half with each grade level. So, that's either four, five, or six teachers. And so, what that means right now is, we get to review the one student they brought up last month in the plan we talked about for them, and to talk about one more student. And so, that really isn't enough students for what I'd like to be talking about. So, I'd like to fine-tune the process to where we could be talking about more children. But this year, as much as I have always in my head, I want it to be perfect as soon as I create it in my head, I've said to all of the staff members, "This is a learning process this year", both to the math interventionist, the reading interventionist, and all the teachers, where this is a learning process about how we're going to make this work. And so, each month when we meet, we talk about someone, we're documenting, we're putting some initiatives in place. We come back, we talk about those initiatives. How has the student's assessments changed? How's your observation changed? What might we do differently? Are there things we could do? So, yes, I think it's having an impact, but I also think we could continue to fine-tune the process. And so, I'm reflective enough to know it's not where I want it to be yet.
That's great, and that's good to hear that, you know, you're going through that process of self-assessment. On that note, the responsive classroom social competency curriculum, I think it's great that although you have a sense and everyone has a sense that this thing is going well, you're still going to do the survey. You still want to look at that.
We're looking for an effective survey. I'm actually going to work with the responsive classroom folks to see what they recommend because it's tough to quantify at our level, I think, especially because there's not a pre-survey in place. But I'm going to talk to them about what's available and keep looking at that. So, yeah, that is, that's on our radar.
That's great to hear. Just, not to steal Chuck's thunder, but with the clubs, you know, I think it's something that everyone in the district really wants us to be able to do. What do you need from us? What's the?
Well, I think Dr. Branko probably would agree. We had overwhelming club interest this year. It was, it caught us all off-guard. The number of students that were interested in clubs and the number of students that were interested in multiple clubs caught us off-guard. So, you know, I guess we, we need to weigh that out. I mean, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on clubs as it is. And so, at some point, it comes down to, you know, where do you put your resources? Right now, every student was able to participate in at least one club, and I think that that's great. You know, we could funnel as much resources as we'd like into clubs, and students could do, you know, one student could do four clubs. However, what is that, you know, the balloon can only be squeezed so many ways. So, I hate to recommend that we funnel resources into clubs. If that would mean I wouldn't get a Chromebook card, or, you know, we wouldn't be able to implement another program for students. So, you know, it's, that's a tough question for me to answer. In a perfect world, we'd have the funding to be able to offer clubs, as many clubs as possible for every child. But I think that it was pretty well-balanced this year that every child got a club experience. And we also were able to infuse significantly more technology into the building and make significantly more improvements in other ways as well.
Thank you. I kind of want to say to every, all the principals here, "What are you doing at school committee? You're doing great stuff at your schools." I mean, I think we all appreciate the presentation, and I'm learning a lot. But, you know, you've, you're taking on so much in so little time. It's kind of like, "Oh, what are you doing here?" You're just talking to the five of us, you know, and you could be working with your staff or your students. So, I appreciate.
Well, hopefully, we're talking to.
Yes, hopefully, and Deidre over here.
Were you saying you did just to compliment?
No, no.
I'm glad you said that.
You certainly did not.
Not letting off the hook. Just saying, I appreciate the amount of time.
Steve just mentioned to me, Russell Street was the first school to do the ALSS training with staff. We did it last month, and Chuck, you mentioned it. Detective Fernandez came. He and I presented. Steve was there. We presented to the faculty and staff at Russell Street, and that went extremely well. As you can ima, imagine a challenging program to present. It's certainly a heavy topic. I met with a parent today with Detective Fernandez who had some questions about the program. That meeting went very well. So, we certainly respect, as the superintendent indicated at the last meeting, that it's a heavy topic and it's challenging for folks to think about. But we just wanted to report that the training went extremely well. And overwhelmingly, the feedback from staff was positive, and that folks felt extremely empowered by the training. They felt like while some of the content was difficult to think about, they left the training feeling very empowered and very prepared. So, the implementation rollout of ALSS so far is going very well.
Thanks for bringing up Steve. I don't really need me thunder, but I, I do have some comments, but I don't even wait impatiently, Deidre, so.
I just wanted to come back to a couple areas. One is clubs. I think that, I guess, is there a reason that only teachers can run clubs? I guess I'm looking for the opportunity to use the community, use other students to expand the offerings. I think we've got a lot of resources within the community, and we've got some successes.
There's a contractual component to the contract that we have to be aware of.
But if we can't offer any more clubs because we don't have any more teaching staff, are we not at a point where we could do something different?
We could perhaps do many things different. It really depends on the situation as to how one would handle it. We're, at this point in time, our goal is to make sure that every student has an opportunity to take part in a club. We also have the responsibility as a, as a school district to help parents balance their very busy lives with their children. So, we want, we don't want to go overboard. At the same time, we want to make sure that we provide enough opportunities for our students after the school day. If we do run into a situation where we need to reconsider things, there are avenues that we can pursue that we have to strategically go into that process.
I mean, we have older students that could be helping younger students, right?
We do, but there, there are legal implications of doing that as well.
What I'd like to do is maybe, there's, there's opportunity there. There's certainly opportunity to collaborate with Park and Rec, with older students, with parents. So, there's, you're doing a lot of subcommittees, and every, every professional staff is getting involved with some, taking on some responsibility. And I'll put myself out there because I'm kind of liaison with Park and Rec to kind of look into this a little further and, you know, report back and see if there are other opportunities. There are some contractual obligations and, you know, some limitations, if you will. So, but I will take it on as taking a look at if there are any opportunities to collaborate with Park and Rec and look a little deeper into it, and I'll report back.
Yeah, I just think it's an opportunity that to not be bound by, I mean, I don't, I don't, I've not read the contract recently. It's probably been a year. But there's just, as a community, we spend a lot of time on community service. And I think that there's a lot of opportunities to do that type of collaboration. So, why not see if we could use it and reach more students?
Right, but as Dr. Branko started to say, we, we don't allow middle school and high school students to supervise elementary students without an adult with them, without a staff member with them, for liability reasons. Even in the peer mentor programs and whatnot, that'd be supervised by a staff member. So, for us to ask a staff member to supervise them in a club and not contractually pay them what their contract indicates they would be paid is where we start to get into a challenge.
Well, but you could also have high school students, right? You still wouldn't need one advisor, right? So, if you had a situation where you had a lot of kids in a club, couldn't we augment that with high school students to help the? I'm just throwing out ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, I mean, we, we evolve as we, we continue to move forward. It is important to know that Kate does sit down with us and our principals every year. And we do have discussions about voids that we may see, and how Park is, Park and Rec is a partner. And Park and Rec does a lot within this community in terms of extra programming. And we want to, you know, we want, we also want to make sure that we're supporting each other and not cutting into their, their territory as well. So, it's a, I think we're doing a very good job at this point in time. But again, as we, we continue to move forward, we may have different demographics that we need to take a look at.
Yeah, I think it is important to focus on the fact that we were able to meet every, every child that wanted to participate, was able to participate in something. And certainly, if there's opportunity to grow that, we want that as well. And how we get there can be any, any combination of ways.
And I just wanted to compliment you. I'm excited to hear about your community outreach. And I would encourage that we actually, like parents evenings, I would actually encourage me to do that in all of our schools. And that outreach is not just training them, but helping us understand what you need from us, right? I don't know that everybody understands what we need to support our children or, and so, if you're able to communicate that, then I think you would have, not only help educate, let's say it's Aspen or whatever the particular topic is, but I think if you say, "This is what we need from you as parents to support your students or to support the school", then we all have a common base of knowledge as opposed to what we, you know, encounter because we're helping our child in a given grade.
Good, thank you. Nice input. My comments are just kind of an overall comment. Certainly, excuse me, has been a very busy year. And make sure that you, you know, let us know. It is appreciated. Let the staff know. It is appreciated by us and I think by the community at large. The comments about the responsive classroom, you mentioned that it was expensive and that we found different ways to, you know, make sure that we got the funding. You mentioned valuable. I think it's awesome that we were able to do it. We're seeing results, although we're not quantifying them necessarily. But you're seeing results. You're feeling results. And I think that's, that's, I would count that as quantifying it. And I love the fact that we looked at that not necessarily as an expense because it was a big line item. And we looked at it as an investment, and we're getting a return on that investment. So, hats off to all involved. One of the overriding things, as you were going through, Scott, was the, it seemed like there was a lot of inclusion. Every staff is involved. Every student was accommodated for the clubs. So, that's, that's great, and I commend you and your staff. Again, the collaboration amongst all of you is fantastic. That's really, everybody else kind of hit on everything else, so I won't belabor the point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I think, Dr. Branko?
It's mine, Thunder.
I'm sorry. Did you want to?
I have multiple devices.
Good evening. So, I strategically chose this tie this morning.
Is that a shout-out to Pharrell Williams?
So, my two colleagues had already talked about the amount of initiatives, the amount of work we're doing, and the fact that here we are, you know, giving a mini update. And it's extremely jam-packed, and I tried to keep mine to three pages, and I probably could have gone five or six or seven, so I just gave you highlights. But the reality is, I say, I stay at school right now, and I sent a memo out to the faculty Sunday night telling everybody to take a deep breath, that March is by far the busiest month in the, in the world of public schools. And so, everything's, everything's, everything's happening. And today is the first day of spring, so this is the "Don't worry, be happy" look. So, you know, take a breath, relax, it will get through March. April 1st is coming. But, you know, to echo some of what my colleagues said, there's been a lot going on. And the middle school has been very busy, as well as the other schools. What I gave you today is just some highlights in that report of all the work we've been doing. Right off the top, it's probably the biggest initiative that's happening at the middle school right now is that the science department is working on executing a comprehensive review of the middle school science program with the intent to make a selection, development, and implementation of a new program. I also included in the packet a curriculum review process outline that I hope you took a look at because Dr. Finity and I, who's leading the charge really around the science curriculum overhaul here, spent a lot of time putting this plan together. It's very similar to the plan we used three years ago when we did our math overhaul and when we adopted our new math curriculum. So, if you take a look at that curriculum review outline that you have, we really are trying to triangulate our data. So, we're in the middle of doing an assessment. Actually, we've just completed our assessment of current program and practices, looking at what we have been doing at LMS in the world of science, how that has impacted children and how we've been working in the classroom. We've now moved on to a review of the Massachusetts High Performing Middle School programs. You can see in that outline that we strategically chose. We are thirty, we're 39th in the state in the MCAS rankings when we were choosing all of the schools that are above us, basically. And we've highlighted them in this outline to tell you exactly who we're looking at. And we're doing interviews. We're doing surveys, and we're doing program observations and going out to do site visits to find out what these high-performing districts, who are on par or better than us, are doing in their middle schools. And can we really adopt some of those best practices, steal some of their ideas, take a look at their methodologies, take a look at their materials? And the third way that we're triangling data is we're continuously looking at the research-based reviews of best practices and programs. We are very, very fortunate this year that the National Science Teachers Conference is actually Conference is actually in Boston coming up in about two to three weeks. That is just a gift that it happened to happen at the exact same time that we're doing a big curriculum review. You know, that could be a huge expense and a huge initiative to get teachers from Massachusetts to go if it's in Austin, Texas, or if it's in Las Vegas or somewhere else. And it just happens to fall at our doorsteps here in Boston. So, we're sending the entire science team, all three teachers, plus Mr. Shoemakers going out for at least one day to take a look at all of the offerings, all of the, all of the resources that are going to be right in our backyard from the national level. So, if you really take a good look at that outline, you'll really see that we're taking a focused effort on putting our efforts into coming out, hopefully within a year and a half, coming out with a plan that we can pilot. And then down the road, obviously, our two-year goal is to implement a brand-new program that does have web-based materials, that does have interactive materials, that is more hands-on and more 21st century than what we're doing now, and doesn't put us in a position to be anchored to textbooks that are going to be out of date in two to three years. So, that's a huge statement coming out of my mouth. That's a lot of stuff to say we're doing. And Dr. Finity is very bright and is very engaged and is very excited about doing this. And she's working with a staff that is, goes, runs the gamut from excited about doing it to nervous about the change. And so, I think we have to recognize that that's a lot of work when you talk about analyzing what you do for a living, what you do well, what you need to improve on, and what other people are doing. And so, you know, I know that that's a lot of time spent on one little box. But when I came here, I heard about math a lot. And it was the same way. We did a huge undertaking in the math curriculum. And so, we're doing this again three years later in another area. So, you know, I feel like every two to three or four years at the middle school, as well as the other schools, if we stay on cycle, we'll be able to continuously look at our curriculum and make sure that we're cutting edge and we're offering our kids best that they can. In a similar fashion, the ELA team is actually looking at how we are teaching and assessing vocabulary. And this has been a fascinating conversation in a small town with a one-Z school. And what I mean by that is you have one ELA teacher on grade level, one math teacher on grade level, one social studies, et cetera. We have a department of three, basically, in every subject area at the middle school. And because of that, there's a pretty comfortable level of autonomy because you're at your sixth grade and your seventh grade and your eighth grade. But they really need to talk cohesively and systemically about how we're attacking certain things like vocabulary. You're going to hear about research practices down the road at the middle school as well. And vocabulary is a big push because it spreads out across all discipline areas. So, the ELA team has taken this on to talk about how they're doing it individually at each grade level currently. And can we bring their best practices together? And similarly to the science, they've developed their own outline. And can we look at other schools in the area? Can we look at other best practices? Can we look at the research and decide how are we focusing on vocabulary development, teaching it, embedding it in our curriculum, and assessing it? And, you know, I'm preaching to the choir in this room, but we all know that literacy drives everything in your world as an educated person. So, the more literate you are, the better you can access vocabulary, the better you can analyze text, the better you can read for meaning, the higher level of adult you become and the more high-functioning you become in society. So, we really feel like at the middle school that that's our, that's our job is to help these kids get a better handle on vocabulary access so that it's not just about ELA, but it's about accessing all curricular areas, especially as they enter high school a few years later. Similarly, we're staying in the ELA department for the next area that we've been focusing on. And you've heard from, from my colleagues about FAST and piloting different DDMs. And you've heard from the superintendent about Achieve 3000. We did a FAST reading pilot in grade six through eight very recently, which is a nationally-normed assessment. This is something the middle school's really been begging for since the day I got here. I came to this committee after being on the job, I think, less than two months and begged you for salary and materials to support a math lab program. And it was graciously given to us. I believe there's still a need for a literacy lab model at the middle school as well. We were not inundated with data to support that request, however. So, anecdotally, for many years, we believed that we have a subset of kids who are reading below grade level who are struggling with accessing content from a literary standpoint. And until very recently, we haven't really had a good standardized assessment at the middle school that we can hang our hat on to be able to support that statement. So, the FAST pilot is really kind of killing two birds with one stone. It's allowing us to really collect data on our kids by name and get a good feel for where they are as far as their reading level and comprehension goes. And secondarily, it's going to help us move forward in the world of DDMs so that we can start to look at district-determined measures in a global way. So, most, many schools are piloting that assessment as well as other assessments this year in the district. And we're, you know, I've had to caution our ELA teachers and even parents because I'm pretty transparent when it comes to putting information in that weekend update. And then people obviously want to be in the loop and know what's going on. And so, one of the things I'm cautioning teachers and parents about, that when you pilot a program like FAST or any other nationally-normed assessment, we don't know as much about it as, as maybe we should and as we, as much as we will as we move forward. So, this district has been immersed in G-mate and grade for many years. And the middle school has had the luxury of Shaker Lane and Russell Street doing a lot of the legwork respectfully for us, teaching parents, teaching teachers, and teaching kids what those assessments mean. So, by the time they get to us, you guys are veterans in that knowledge base and everybody knows what standard one, two, and three is when it comes to a G-mate and a grade as parents. And with the exception of people internally who have studied FAST, we don't have a broad community knowledge base around this assessment yet. So, we're being very conservative in how we use this data right now. We're not really making judgment calls. And again, the arrogant Massachusetts person in me says, "Remember that it's a nationally-normed assessment." And so, you know, we're comparing children to many children from a variety of states across the nation. And so, we do believe and know that we are at the top of the nation as far as education goes. So, we still hang our hat on our local and our state assessments quite a bit. But I'm excited about that. And the ELA department is very proud of the fact that we're finally moving forward in this direction as well. A little below that, you'll see that we're talking about continuing to research best practices and implementing strategies and programming related to meeting the needs of struggling learners. I'm proud of the work we've done at the middle school over the past four years in this area. We are continuing an aggressive implementation of our academic support center program. And this is beginning to provide tiered support right after the first trimester midterm, which we tried to do last year. And we've done it even more effectively this year. Ms. Dorfman and I, if you don't know, every single Friday religiously go out to the teams, four teams, every single Friday. And that's kind of our version of the data team that you hear a lot about at the middle school. So, every Friday, it's like a No Agenda Friday, kind of like the DJ says on the radio. So, we go out, we have No Agenda Friday, and we talk about kids by name. And we talk about social, emotional, and academic growth, or lack thereof, and what we can do to meet their needs. And out of those meetings come referrals for the academic support center and different ways that we can support kids in the after-school academic support center and the in-school academic support center. And something new that we've added this year is we've been, the teachers fill out weekly progress updates, which are done through Google Docs with the help of the tech team who have helped us develop those skill sets. So, the Google Docs this year for the first time, since every student has a Gmail account, we have shared them with the students. And we have told the parents that we're sharing that data with the students. And we have asked parents to partner with us and sit down with their children who are in the program on the weekends, open those Google Docs to the Gmail accounts, and see what teachers are writing and reporting so that in real time, parents and students are given information. And then also on Friday after the four meetings, Ms. Dorfman and I have lunch every single Friday with the academic support students. And we pull their forms up on the TV with the help of Apple TV and Google Docs and all the other great tech stuff that we're doing. And we pull them up and we have transparent conversations about how we're doing. And we've seen some good success. And it's, even if you haven't seen massive academic growth in certain children, we've seen self-esteem or we've seen a development of ownership in children that I don't think formally existed there. So, we're proud of that work. And we will continue to try to refine that program. We continue to implement co-taught ELA in mathematics. And we've had conversations with Dr. Dotwiler about the benefits of that program and the impact it's had on special-ed students as well as regular-ed students, having a partnership between our regular-ed students and our special, I'm sorry, our regular-ed teachers and our special-ed teachers in the classroom. And as you know, the math lab continues to produce legitimate growth numbers out of a high percentage of our students in that program. When we talk about meeting the needs of our advanced learners, if you look at the school improvement plan, we talked about two, two major ways to do this. We talked about program implementation. And we talked about pedagogical practices. And those are two sub-separate ways of tackling this problem or this initiative that are stated. So, what I've listed here are programmatic changes because, believe it or not, it's quicker to make those happen in an organization. And pedagogical changes take time and they take buy-in and they take training. So, right now, we've been able to continue our implementation of VHS. We've been able to offer VHS to more students every single year, I mean, the four years that I've been here. We've been able to refine the types of classes kids take. We've even been able to listen to students and parents about what classes are good and what aren't good, what they'd like to take and not take. We've even gone so far as to be able to critique the program itself. And we've gotten feedback from VHS that they've appreciated that. The engineering club, to speak to what Mrs. Jones was talking about earlier, is in its third, fourth, third year, I guess, now. And it is a club after school that is primarily run by high school students, bright high school kids who have a career path and an interest in this area. And is, as Mr. Bezidlo said, is overseen by a certified teacher so that we have a qualified adult on the record. But I do want to give props to the students who have done this program in the past who've been here, as well as the two Bradford sisters who are currently doing this program. And I just met with them recently. And we're in conversations with Dr. Hoag and Mr. McEckern from the tech department to really try to make that program even, even bigger and better. And Mr. Shoemakers particularly interested in going to this science conference that I talked to you about because they have a big engineering component that they're showing. They're showing the Legos. They're showing the ball-stuff. They're showing a lot of the hands-on stuff that middle school kids are really intrigued by. And it's that introductory-level stuff. So, as opposed to using some high-end equipment first, you know, from a developmental standpoint, you want to make sure they're engaged and they get the basic information first. So, we are trying to dovetail into using a partnership with high school students. I'm also talking to the high school National Honor Society advisor about the possibility of doing a model similar to what we have going down at Russell Street with students coming down and doing a, like, peer mentoring and peer tutoring program with students at the middle school next year. So, the partnerships, I think, are going to continue to grow. And I think you've got a leadership team that believes that that's important and is good for kids on both ends, quite honestly. However, when you talk about pedagogical best practices, I talked to you a minute about, a minute ago, about Ms. Dorfman and I visiting the teams around struggling learners. One of the things Ms. Dorfman and I have talked about starting in trimester three, and it's taken two trimesters to plan that. And so, this is where change takes time. We've had to really talk about how we're going to do this. And one of the things we're talking about rolling out very soon is instead of just looking at our kids who are getting C's, D's, and F's and struggling learners on those Friday meetings, designating other days where we're talking about the kids who are banging out A after A after A. And instead of saying, "Oh, nice job," can we talk about those kids in a better way and say, "Great that they're getting those As. But now what can we do to challenge them? What can we do to meet their needs at the other end?" And it's not about piling on more work. And it's not just about giving a midline different assignment. It really is about using higher-order thinking skills, higher-order Bloom's taxonomy, and higher-order 21st century skills with the four Cs, and really rallying around those kids in a challenging way. That is a, that is a pedagogical shift that in any school is very difficult. The state of Connecticut has gifted and talented mandates and laws around that. And in my previous districts, I've been fortunate enough to experience professional development from people coming out of the University of Hartford and the University of Connecticut and different places. So, one of the things we'd like to talk about at the middle school is about bringing people in from those areas to maybe do some good training with, with staff and professional development next school year around me and the needs of those students and making sure we're taking care of kids at both ends of the spectrum. You heard about the Common Core State Standards a little bit from one of my colleagues. And so, we've also done a lot of work around their professional development days with the ELA science, social studies, and special ed team, both in writing and in reading Common Course State Standards. And so, that entailed full-day professional development releases. It also entailed some authentic time where they came with work samples. There's something done in a lot of schools called looking at student work, which is when you come to the table with examples of your students. And it's, it's like a very safe way to critique the work kids have done and how, how you impacted the work and how you can better the work. And in this model, what we did was we kind of did a looking at colleague work model at the middle school. And they came to the table with their reading and writing assessments. And really, in a very safe way, with the consultant and with each other, did some good, deep self-evaluation of the students' work, which really is the teachers' work, and how we're impacting kids and how we're connecting to those Common Course standards. And the first day was great. The first day is nuts and bolts. And I just happened to be more hands-on, authentic guy. And so, the second day was great. The second day was teachers digging in with the consultant, talking about what they do for a living and being proud of their samples and passing it out and being careful and critical and reflective with each other. So, those were days well spent. You've heard a lot about the site-based professional development model already. Most of you know that that was the focus of my graduate work, postgraduate work last year. So, I am personally proud and professionally proud of the fact that we've moved in this direction. At the middle school, it really took off. I think we have twelve different offerings on our six days that are all connected to the site, to the school improvement plan. I'm reading off my phone. So, my old man eyes are kicking in here. So, we've, oh, sorry. We have a variety of offerings going on. I'm not going to read them all. But there's one that's called the Professional Book Club that is unbelievable. The teachers in that group each come with their own book. They read the book. There's a book club model. And then they report out and share and teach the group about that book and that, whatever the research-based model is, the pedagogical information is. And it has had an immediate impact. We're three books in, I think, already. Every, I've heard back that every time someone's presented a book, somebody, if not everybody, from that particular group has gone out and thought about what they've learned and implemented something in the classroom. We also obviously have the science curriculum review going on. We have project shares and lesson activities, which is a kind of a great opportunity for teachers to come to the table with what they're proud of. So, it's basically like an opportunity to show off and then teach your colleagues. Here's something I think I'm really good at that you might not know about. And it's an opportunity to share your best practices internally. And that's a valuable, valuable use of that time. We're having a class called Exploring the Flipped Classroom. We have three teachers at the middle school, probably more, but three that are really running with the flipped classroom model. They have created YouTube videos. One of our math teachers has actually flipped probably more than 50% of her lessons already. So, the kids can watch videos and they can watch tutorials and they can get engaging lessons at home. I know my daughter has a teacher where I live that does this. And it's fascinating to watch as a parent. So, my daughter, like me, needs to see the same thing two or three times sometimes. And she's allowed to watch it as many times as she wants. And then she, if she doesn't get it, she'll write down questions and she'll go in the next day. It's a fascinating thing to watch an 11-year-old take control of their own learning like that. As opposed to 30 problems and going in and getting ticked off, "Yes, I got them right," or "No, I got them wrong." So, it's a really cool thing. And we've got, I think, eight or nine staff members who are going to participate in that flipped classroom model training moving forward in the second half of the year here. I said that the ELA team is doing their work. Our librarian, Ms. Cornwall, is working on a Destiny, sorry, library platform, I believe. Our librarian at the high school already has this model put in place. Destiny is a very powerful database, research database, that especially at the middle school is going to help students stop Googling it and be better consumers of information. And it's going to really steer them in good educational directions when it comes to doing online research. And she's doing a lot of work about getting that database up. And she's rolling this out and going out to classrooms to train students and teachers how to use this authentically for research problems. The PE and health department is looking at FitnessGram along with the high school PE and health department as a DDM and as a way to be able to measure student growth and progress in those two areas, which is very difficult for them to do, quite honestly, in an area that many of us look at as an opportunity to get some exercise or pull off some steam or just enjoy some time. They're held to make sure that kids coming on those programs today understand their bodies and understand growth and understand healthy eating and understand the ramifications of having a positive lifestyle on their body and their mind. And so, they're doing a lot of work around that. A ton of technology professional development. You guys know the list. We've done a massive amount of work in Teach Point where we've implemented our student-parent portal in Aspen. That took a considerable amount of professional development the school year concurrently with Teach Point, actually. At the middle school, we have two Chromebook cards that are, that are, people are literally tripping over and fighting over to get to. And to the point where we have to put it through the help desk in the tech department just to make sure that there's some equity going on. So, I can only tell you that it's fascinating to watch the Chromebooks take off at the middle school. So, where Shaker Lane has just set the bar at a high level when it comes to iPads, the middle school continues to do good work with iPads and social studies. But the Chromebook, much to my surprise, quite honestly, seems in a very short amount of time to have become the tool of choice at the middle school. And it is fascinating to watch. We cannot keep them in the closets. They're just out all the time. And I've got teachers bargaining. Can you, if you have ten, I'll have ten. It's fascinating to watch. So, and now this time of year, when we have students who need them for MCAS and when we pilot the park, which will shut us down for 10 days because you need the Chromebooks to do that, I've got teachers freaking out because it's 10 days if they don't even get access to that material. Bless you. So, it's just a fascinating transformation. So, and again, I talked about the flipped classroom. So, we've done a lot of technology PG. When it comes to communication, I could have listed a million things here. I listed the new initiatives because I think you're pretty in tune with what we've been doing at the middle school for a while. Weekend updates, Twitter accounts, YouTube, almost every single teacher with some kind of website or blog, flipped classroom. There's a lot of communication going on. But as far as some of the things we really focused on, we were looking in the improvement plan, as you know, for a school-wide implementation on, we were looking in the improvement plan, as you know, for a school-wide implementation of Aspen. Obviously, that happened at the report chart in the midterm level, but one of the things I'm really proud of that's happened with lots of effort and little resistance, is the way I'll put it, is that we have many, many faculty members providing parents and students with access to the grade books in real time through the family portal. And there's a specific bullet on there that I want to give a nod to. The seventh-grade team has wrapped all of this together. So when we're working on student, sorry, we're working on professional SMART goals in our evaluation model, they have written a goal around empowering students to use the Aspen portal with the help of their parents in a way to own their own education, to help their organizational skills, to know what they owe and don't owe. It's a fascinating thing, and Mr. Shoemaker has jumped in. He's going to be teaching them, the students, how to use the portal, what their passwords are, how to get in and out. And so that's a huge undertaking that I quite humbly didn't even push. The seventh-grade team, as some of you know, have children come through, used to use another product that had a portal, and so they were all in on the portal, and it has really grown. So I think we have two eighth-grade teachers, we have two unified arts teachers, and we have, I think, one or two sixth-grade teachers who are currently using those portals in real time. And it's just fascinating to watch that expand to the middle school, and my hope is that with little resistance, within a short period of time, we're going to see a full transparency of that happening, and it's a really nice change. So from a climate and culture standpoint, my colleagues talked about Alice implementation, so I won't repeat the implementation process with you. Our dates, Chuck, if people are looking to come, are next Wednesday and Thursday, I believe. I'll make sure I'm right, but I think it's next Wednesday and Thursday from 2:00 to 3:30 both of those days. So we're doing the classroom version of the training on Wednesday, and then we're doing the authentic drills on Thursday. So I can't speak to the level of impact it's going to have, that it has had, but I can tell you that we gave broad-based overviews as principals right after we came back from that training because we felt we couldn't sit on it. And even after the broad overview, teachers changed their practice, teachers started to get excited and realistic about the impacts that this could have. So I look forward to that training, and Detective Fernandez, Mr. Mark, myself, and Greg Gillette, who's our PE teacher, was trained, and so the four of us will be participating and leading that training next week.
Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday. Yep. Also, in the climate and culture category, we continue to implement our Second Step program. We're proud of the change we made last year where we have every student in a small advisory from, everyone from me on down has an advisory now, and so that's a fascinating thing. And one of the changes when we did student surveys was the kids wanted to be split with boy groups and girl groups, and we found that fascinating, and we listened to them and basically said, "Why not?" And they said, "Look, girls don't want to talk about certain stuff with middle school boys, and middle school boys certainly don't want to talk about certain stuff with middle school girls." And so we just, we gave in, and the feedback so far from the adults and the kids is that it has made a huge difference. So that's a nice shift, and we continue to improve that program and refine our ability to implement that program every single year. A busy year we've had. Some of our stuff hits every two years, so this year we've had the SOS program, the signs of suicide in seventh grade, the YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, hit grade six and eight this year. So when you talk about the month of March roaring in here, that's really, there's a lot going on when you come to all of that stuff, plus MCAS, plus PAR, plus a very busy Washington DC trip in the month of March and everything else that's happened. National Junior Honor Society has taken on, under the direction of Ms. Holly Ballard, has taken on this nice initiative where we've talked for a couple of years of developing a student recognition program, kind of an out-of-the-box recognition program. We have a lot of ways to recognize theater and athletes, and now we're getting much better at recognizing our academics, ironically, but we're doing a better job of that now. This is kind of the outside of the norm. Kids that get awards in town, kids that, you know, four-H fairs, or I'm at a loss for some of them, but they're just, you know, the unique ways that kids perform and show their off, their individual successes. So we're asking community members, parents, kids, teachers, anybody to kind of filter that to National Junior Honor Society, and we have a nice bulletin board called our Student Spotlight that's in the lobby, and we're going to be rotating that with bios and updates about kids, and I'll be tweeting that information out, and we'll put that out in the newspaper. And I just think it's a neat way to really rally around the culture of the school and recognize that it's all walks of life that make us come together as one school. And we had our All School Veterans Day for the second year in a row, which was a very, very great event. Many over 30 to 35 veterans came in and created a nice community partnership there. And finally, the school council, right now, we just did this work Tuesday, is almost on finalizing our end-of-the-year parent survey. So if you remember, we do that every other year at the middle school, and we're refining that survey to make it, to give us better data specific to parents who have more than one child in the school. So one of the interesting things about the way we wrote the survey, which we wouldn't have figured out until we gave it, was if you had more than one child in the school, by default, you might have answered certain questions through the lens of one child and not the other, or you might have just found it difficult to answer the question, however you wanted to because you had different lenses on it, because we do look at everything through the eyes of each one of our children. So we're refining that survey. Many of the questions will be the same because my survey methodology is obviously to keep most of the questions consistent over time so you can have a baseline and you can look at growth, and then we'll have a new initiative section every two years that will change based on what we're currently doing. And the final thing we'll talk about is technology. We've added two Chromebook cards, which I've already talked about. We have some teachers doing blended learning, so you hear a lot about tech integration, flipped classroom, asynchronous programming. Blended learning is another one. It's basically the combination of face-to-face and online classes together. So we have some teachers using Moodle, and we have teachers using Wikispaces and other methodologies and other tools so that the class expands, and it is that true blend of face-to-face and online learning that makes the classroom almost endless and gives kids an opportunity to learn at their own pace and in their own way. And it's being done in very small pockets right now, and the people who are doing it are doing it very well, and my hope is that they'll be able to, in next year's PD model, they'll be excited about offering some site-based PD in that area as well. And then I listed a laundry list, basically, of the stuff we're doing, flipped classroom, YouTube channels. We updated the library computer lab, which is fantastic, so we have a full PC lab up there that's up to date, and we have a Google Calendar going so teachers can sign that out on a regular basis. And we continue to implement our BYOD program, and I've listed all the different devices here that I've seen come into the schools, smartphones, tablets, laptops, Chromebooks, e-readers, iPod touches, and they're being used for research, for note-taking, for assignment completion, for organization, for online assessments, for accessing web-based course materials. I don't know that it's at 50% yet, but it's growing every single year. And in combination, when you put together school-provided devices with student-provided devices, it's just the perfect match. Everybody gets to use something, and I've become, I've said this before, I've become very device agnostic recently, and it's less about the product and it's more about getting to the cloud and getting to the information, and I'm hoping that we're doing that well at the middle school. That's everything.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Gentlemen, comments, questions?
No.
No. Excellent report.
Wow. How's that?
Really?
That was my, that was my plan.
Your goal was that?
To lull you out right there.
I'll try to follow that with something not quite as succinct, but hopefully getting close.
So he didn't do an excellent job.
Excellent job. I was going to say that I was going to have to speak less to you because I have less questions, but that's not because you're not doing an excellent job, but now Daryl's making me seem like I'm doing something wrong. Regarding the gifted and talented program and wanting to expand that, that's something that I think we've all heard a lot about, and it's great that we're focusing on that. I just want to make sure that as we do this and as we continue to work on, as you said, focusing on the at-risk students, what about the students who don't necessarily fall into either category?
Right.
Either because they're, you know, doing okay but not amazing, or because they have a lot of potential academically but they're also struggling a lot?
Right.
So there's, sometimes the students who are at risk, they also need to be challenged in those ways.
Yeah, it's a totally fair question, and one of the interesting things we did early on after the first trimester was we ran, we used to run, for lack of a better term, the CDF list, and we had these conversations, and now I just run the whole list by grade, and I go through that with Ms. Orphan with the highlighter. Very old school, not high-tech. And then when I go out, we have those conversations. So what about the kids who are sitting consistently in a C or a B range? And we look at, you know, it's easier with MCAS data when you talk about growth because they spit out growth reports, so we do have to come up with better ways to create our own growth reports, and so right now it's done in an old-school way where we look at the growth and we look at, okay, has this kid gone up or has he maintained over the past year or so? And we have more authentic conversations about those kids. We're not forgetting them, we're not pushing them. We do feel like at the middle school, that hasn't been an area that we've struggled with. I believe we've made massive growth in the area of meeting the needs of kids who were below the average range in the learning category, and we continue to focus on them nationally and at the state level and at the local level for a lot of reasons, many of them mandated reasons, and many of them because we just feel like that's where our focus has to be. So I, you know, we're not ignoring them, Alex, but I do think at the middle school, they're pretty well taken care of. I think we haven't done a lot of training and a lot of embedded focus on how to meet the advanced learner's needs in the classroom. We have a lot of programs. Many schools add programs around the curriculum, which is absolutely fine and okay, but I think you eventually have to look at what you're doing in the classroom too, because I don't want a kid just sitting there bored. And I don't want a kid walking in, if the kid can walk in and already get the A after three weeks, some kids would go, "Great, let me go." And we might even say that as adult learners, but that's not okay. And so we do have some work to do there, and that's, pedagogically speaking, that's professional development, and that's a good year's worth of work on something like that.
Thank you. The other note I had was regarding the ELA team working on vocab. I think the shift that you're looking at is also supported by the recent SAT changes, which are looking at taking away the SOTIC terms that the SAT has used for decades and now shifting them more towards what students need for college and career and also what students will need for science, for history, for math, for foreign language discussions, for any sort of analytical or inter-curricular studies that they'll do in high school and middle school and also, you know, later on in life as lifelong learners. So I think that's a good shift.
One of the interesting things with vocabulary is many of us grew up with a laundry list of vocab words, and so the big shift now is it's not just about being able to memorize spelling and vocab words and regurgitating the answers back, but can you use them in your writing and can you use them in your high-end conversation?
And will you?
And will you? And so that's the hard work. I mean, honestly, good ELA teachers could create pretty decent lists, and they're probably already out there that we don't even have to create. It's about how are we embedding these words in our curricular areas and how are we asking kids to use them and how are we asking them to demonstrate their knowledge and use of them? That's hard work. That's what they're doing right now.
What do you need for the ELA lab in terms of money? How can we help?
I think that's a priority conversation at the admin table, honestly, and I think the middle school needs enough data to be able to come back to the admin table and come back to this team to say, what I could say four years ago, which is definitively, this is what I need. I believe it's what I need and what the middle school needs, but I...
You need more time.
I'd like, well, not a lot more time, but I'd like enough data to be able to substantiate that claim.
Sure.
Do you have a thought?
I think it's coming.
Thank you. Oh, I'm good. Thank you. Just one second. Well, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead. I'll go last.
I wanted to compliment you. I'm really excited about flipped classrooms. I think it's a great opportunity. What I'm looking to, when, as a community, will we get to share what you're learning? What are the benefits?
Right.
Let go beyond the middle school, since I don't have a kid there, but...
So Mr. Bizidlo talked about community outreach, and I only spoke tonight of initiatives that we're actually in the middle of working on because it'd be a pretty boring update if I told you what we weren't doing. So, might be shorter, that might be good. One of the things in our two-year improvement plan that's really going to probably be in year two is the community outreach piece, and I'm not sure if we'll commit it or how we'll attack that goal yet, but one of the things we've talked about is everything from the math program to the pedagogical shift in the classroom that are different from how many parents grew up, we need to model that, and we need to have parent nights and come in and put them through a flipped classroom and talk about what it is. You know, I didn't learn math that way. It's like I should have that tattooed somewhere, you know, and so, you know, or hanging on my wall. So having people come in and sit in a math classroom with one of our master teachers to talk to parents through what that looks like. So I think it's coming, and I think it's going to come through parent outreach and through some community opportunities to teach people what this program looks like. You know, I'm going to send out, I'm asking them to put together after the PD sessions to send out some like PR stuff that I can send out to parents through the weekend updates and put on the website to say, "This is what a flipped classroom is, this is what blended learning is, and this is how we're using it at the middle school."
Right, but that's only if you happen to have a student in the school.
It is.
The rest of us should benefit from knowing the great things that are going on in our schools.
Right. Right.
The other question I just had, I'm excited also about this LMS Spotlight.
Yep.
Is the plan to include, I know, I saw the bulletin board when I was in school the other day. Is there a plan to use that, like beyond the bulletin board? Like we do athletes of the week? Why not take this to the newspaper?
It is going to, it actually is going to go to the newspaper. Yeah, it's going to go to the newspaper. It's literally just went up two weeks ago, so it's going to go to the newspaper, it's going to go to websites, I'll start tweeting it out. My hope is that, you know, there are rumors that we're going to try to work with Littleton TV programming to, you know, partner up with them somehow as we move forward, and so if that's true, maybe we have an LMS middle school TV program once a month or something like that. There's a lot of unique ways that we can do this. We're talking about a principals award too, which sounds pretty self-serving, but we'll come up with a better name. You know, we want to come up with nice ways to recognize kids, and, you know, the National Junior Honor Society is supposed to have a really impactful way of doing some good work, and so they were, honestly, a year ago, they were looking for ways to really, we have a great student council, we have an unbelievable best buddies program, we have all these great community service programs at the middle school that are working, that the National Junior Society kind of needed their own thing. So this is where Mrs. Ballard's going with this, I think.
All right, I'm going first next time. You guys stole all my stuff. No, I still have some time. Kind of my theme, whenever you guys do these, is always collaborating, not just amongst yourselves, but stealing from other districts. I love the fact that you started out that way. You know, you're stealing from other districts that are performing better than you feel we are, and the fact that you're looking at Connecticut for the gifted and talented. It's already been done, why recreate it? Like you mentioned with vocabulary.
Right.
You don't have to create these lists. Want the lists, they're available. So I love the fact that they're doing that. And the only other thing is the checking in on Fridays. It's lofty, and it's quite an undertaking, but nothing really sneaks by. You know, you're kind of on top of any issues that may arise on a weekly basis, so I commend you on that. You guys are all doing an excellent job. Appreciate the reports.
Thanks.
One more. I have a lot of questions for John already. I already moved them.
I'll be brief. Good evening. Happy to give a mid-year update, somewhat of a mid-year, a little bit past the mid-year update for the high school. As my colleagues have attested to, we're an active, vibrant learning community, lots going on, there's no question about it, and I appreciate the efforts, particularly of the faculty and staff who cope with so many mandates, high expectations of our local community, of administrators, of the school committee. We aspire to be better than we are, and we approach that, we approach each day with that attitude, and I think it's part of the school culture. And I appreciate the efforts particularly of the faculty and staff who cope with so many mandates, high expectations of our local community, of administrators, of the school committee. We aspire to be better than we are and we approach that, we approach each day with that attitude. And I think it's part of the school culture. There's no question about it. You see that theme or that thread running through all the schools and of course it stems from the school committee as well. You know, I really appreciate the support of the community. It's no question that throughout the year there's been a variety of things that have come up. We needed something, could call on a parent or someone with certain expertise and they were able to help us out at different points in time. So again, Littleton High School is truly a resource for its community, but also a reflection of it. And we continue our improvement efforts, as you know, from various reports throughout the year, in academics, athletics and arts. And we're proud of the achievements at the high school and our students. In the category of curriculum, when it comes to the school improvement plan, we're all organized according to specific categories. We continue, like the other schools, with aligning our curriculum to the Common Core curriculum. We're doing this in a software program, a portal called Atlas RupertCon, it's something all our staff use across the buildings. We are, we expect to conclude an update around June for where we're at, make sure that we're thoroughly prepared for the upcoming PARC assessment. Right now it's in the pilot stage this year, as well as next year it'll be in a pilot form if the state decides to adopt it. The Board of Education will vote it in and then we'll have to fully implement it. So we want to make sure that we're ahead of everything and thoroughly prepared for that. But the MCAS tests, it's worth mentioning this, are based on the Common Core, which is now Massachusetts Frameworks. So we're already pretty well there as far as with the Common Core, but there's still fine tuning that goes along. Common Core was adopted by the state four years ago. So we're just making sure that we're okay as far as continually to make adjustments, but that work is well underway. We do need, based on our NEAS report, and a lot of the stuff, I'll actually be a bit briefer tonight, more brief, because, you know, we've already presented at different intervals during the year about NEAS and, you know, at different venues about where we're at. One of the findings from NEAS though is that we needed to develop a curriculum for our advisory program. So that's a project that we'd like to continue into the summer and fall. With all the mandates and different competing priorities this year, we wanted to make sure we really appropriately paced the workload of our staff. You heard from the other principals tonight that there's a lot of stress that's associated, not just in our local community, but across the state and the nation, with all the high expectations of schools. And so as we try to manage those expectations, we're trying to make sure we're pacing the work. So we're thinking, you know, we're well aligned with the recommendations in NEAS. We're supposed to report out on that in October and we'll be prepared for that date and we'll present to the school committee in October where we're at with our advisory program. Already this year, you heard a presentation from members of our social studies department, history department, I think Bill Muskinis presented to you in particular about our research curriculum. And we're proud of the work they've done. We'll continue our efforts with refining our research curriculum, which is the student skills, skill sets, and clearly documenting what it is we expect of a Littleton High School graduate to have reviewed or accomplished by the time they're done and they're receiving their diploma. What will they go off to college or whatever post-secondary place they might be heading? What resource skills will they have? We want to make sure that we've thoroughly documented that and that we've embedded that in our curriculum. So our next step is not so much the history department, which has already done that, but is to explore that with our science and ELA department. Also in the area of curriculum, we've just launched through the support of the school committee and the superintendent, a partnership with code.org to offer an exploring computer science course. I think we spoke to this at the last school committee meeting and this will also eventually lead to an AP computer science course at the high school. That's all part of our timeline and separate sort of action plan with code.org. That process is underway. There'll be professional development for our faculty, members who are participating in this, as well as some administrators if they'd like to, in the summer and also throughout next year. And we're grateful for that partnership and that opportunity to have that funding from code.org as well as the curriculum itself, which will be a real, from what I understand, a robust and challenging curriculum that's appropriate for what the field expects our students to graduate with when they, you know, explore computer science. In the area of instruction, in our school improvement plan, it says that we'll update that. Now Darryl mentioned, you know, had a question earlier tonight about whether this is a two-year or a three-year, where are we at with our renewal of our school improvement plans? At the high school, we're a little bit different because we will have to make some adjustments with our school council in the next few months to our specific goals. We have, for sure, we have two-year goals throughout, but based on the NEAS findings that were just, you know, published, we had planned for this and our school improvement plan was written accordingly, that we would have updated based on the recommendations from NEAS. So there'll be some highlighted changes in our school improvement plan that we'll present in June to you when we do our end of the year review. One of the areas though that we have to update you on as well as NEAS is the implementation of school-wide rubrics for academic, social and civic expectations. And those are the outcomes. What do we want Littleton High School to know and be able to do when they graduate? And they're rooted in 21st century skills and they're on our website and you've heard about them in other presentations. They will be reported on in, we have to write a report to NEAS in a while or so. That process is underway as well. In the area of assessment, I think my colleagues have already spoken enough about PARC. They are doing a computer-based version this year and we are fortunate that we have, we don't have to have all the technical specifications met. We are a paper-based test and we have a little bit more time to prepare for it. I think they have, you're underway in March, right, with PARC and we have ours in May. That's what our target date will be. So we simultaneously have occurring at the time AP testing and MCAS testing for the mathematics, you know, courses for the sophomores who take math. Our PARC exam will be based on Algebra II and there'll be about four classes of Algebra II participating in that. So training will get underway right after we wrap up the ELAM CAS this week, which is tomorrow. Students that want to compliment, our students, just take a moment to compliment them on their hard work as I've watched them, engaged with them. They've really shown incredible effort, just like they do every year. Our department does, our English department, all our departments when it comes to the MCAS test do a fantastic job preparing our students for the test. But our students really do, they take it seriously. Some of them perhaps motivated by the opportunity to be eligible for the John Abigail Adams Scholarship, others just wanting to show their finest work. And I see that happening this week as I've watched them take the test. So again, planning is underway, training, just like at the other schools for PARC. Again, I want to thank Dr. Breinkow for bringing a really state-of-the-art, or I guess what's considered a best practice when it comes to site-based professional development to Littleton. We have all adopted that at our buildings and it's based on his dissertation work and it's been so well received by the faculty. We just recently had a district-wide professional development council and the feedback from faculty and staff that were present was very complimentary. So we're looking forward to advancing on that in the next school year. We continue our professional development with Aspen. Just this month, we've launched our online course selection process at the high school. The question that when you start something new, whether it's technical or not, there'll be bumps and glitches and things like that. But so far, they seem to be smoothing out or going okay. But we have, our guidance department is very well invested in that, as well as the tech team. We appreciate the work of Natalie Branch in particular and Mike McGecon who's been instrumental in helping us to launch this online course selection process through Aspen. It's something we've wanted to achieve for a long time, but we just needed to have the right student information system. And we obtained that just a couple of years ago with the district purchase of Aspen. And we also continue our professional development, like all the schools, with Teach Point and getting familiar with the new educator evaluation model. So that's underway and going smoothly this year. In the area of community or communication, I just want to give you an update on one of our goals there that we've had to bump. I had discussions with the faculty about this and members of our bell schedule study group. And in the report that you can see, I think it's posted there, it says, because of all the time commitments and competing priorities, we had to say, what go, what's it going to give? We can't do everything. And this has been an important thing, but it wasn't urgent. It's important and we want to make sure we maintain it as a goal. So we'll continue, we'll pick it up in the fall, but we may actually squeeze a couple visits into other schools in June. One of the things that I think Chuck, you had just mentioned, how much you like when we go and look at other schools for best practices. And we do do that fairly frequently, looking to see what we can borrow and learn from when it comes to other schools. And Hudson High School just recently went through a major overhaul of their schedule. And they're a different size from us, but they did an intensive study process of, I think, a couple of years before they launched their new bell schedule. And from what I've read about it, and I know the principal over there, it's been very well received by the students, the faculty and the parents. And so I'd like to learn more about that, so I'll be setting up a visit. We'll take a team of our faculty over to Hudson High School and go and learn, speak firsthand and see it in action and learn from them. Also, we have some connections over at Ashland and Jim Adams, the principal over there at Ashland High School, has just adopted a new bell schedule. So I think we could perhaps arrange a visit through some of our connections there to Ashland High School and, you know, and learn from what Ashland's done. These schools, districts have already gone through intensive study and maybe we can shorten our process and speed up our implementation of a bell schedule because they've done a lot of the legwork in looking at other schedules from around the country. So although we can't focus our efforts on the bell schedule this year, we are mindful of it and we haven't, we haven't taken, we will make sure we attend to it. You already mentioned a little bit about in terms of communication, how we've launched the new Aspen grading portal and course selection process. And we'll be issuing a survey to parents before the year's out, some type of online survey with some brief questions, you know, short survey, just asking for some feedback of how we can refine our process for next year. Again, we have that ethic of continuous improvement. What can we do differently? We've already received some feedback from parents about this or that and it's been helpful. In regards to the community service, the climate and culture category, I want to thank members of the school council, but in particular someone who's with us tonight, Deidre Jones has been absolutely instrumental in the revisions of the community service handbook. She personally took care of the edits and typed them all up for us and she's always very helpful and reminded me of different things that might, may or may not be appearing on our school webpage and how we may need to make updates. So I appreciate that. And one of the things that we'll be doing is we'll be posting, if it hasn't been posted already, our updated community service handbook. This was after months of deliberation and review by our school council. So again, thank you, Deidre, for all your work with that. We do continue our work though with our community service handbook or community service program, but by thinking, we're thinking about how can we use the Aspen portal perhaps to post the hours so students can get, you know, go to a page and see exactly where they're at at different points in time. Because a lot of students lose track of how many hours they're done and we have sort of a very old-fashioned way of keeping track of that information. So we'd like to refine that and make it more technical, technology-friendly and easily accessible for parents and students. Another thing I'd like to just, you know, I guess acknowledge tonight, we've done it already this year, but again, it's a thanks to the tech team, to the school committee and the community at large who helped to sponsor it last town meeting, I think it was where the funding was finally approved for our wireless internet network. This was a long time coming to Littleton High School. You know, I think you didn't get to benefit from it, but you know, when you were a student, Alex, but it's something we wanted to accomplish for several years and we did, we had to do an interim step of setting up different routers in different parts of the building. That worked, that bought us some time. We were able to be online in most portions, parts of the building, but nothing is, you know, as, I guess, as institutionally ready as the system we have now. This is a really, this is the, you know, the system we needed. And so we're grateful again that that, the wireless internet network was installed last summer. And lastly, I'd just like to acknowledge that we need to continue our work with our technology plan. We need to meet with the tech team probably over the summer into the fall and look to refine a site-based technology plan. Superintendent does not want it to be just a district-based plan that's sort of traditional and he wants it to really be owned by the individual sites. And so we'll look to learn more about that and write that up along with the tech team. And the, no, I don't think it will be in the next few months. It'll probably be in the summer and into the fall when we develop our tech plan. Lots of other initiatives I could mention that are for the future, but I think they'll come with a June update. Among them though, just to give you a heads up of things that are heading our way, my colleagues have already spoken about the Alice program and we're already underway with that. Our date for Alice is April 17th. April 16th is the faculty presentation, faculty meeting after school. April 17th on the early release day like Shaker Lane, we will be having our staff training. We do anticipate changes after our CPR review, the coordinated program review that was just concluded last week, was it, two weeks ago? It just seems like yesterday. The CPR review that we are going, as a high school, we're going to present you with some recommendations for changing requirements in the physical education program to be, you know, be in compliance with state regulations. And we do anticipate an increase in enrollment based on the current eighth grade class and our outgoing 12th grade class. So, you know, that's something we're going to adjust for and I'll be watching closely with superintendent to see how, what exactly our numbers are. But I want to make sure that we attend, we pride ourselves in small class sizes and managing our class sizes so that we can really get to know students and personalize our education. So as I, I'll be updating the superintendent on that as we get closer, get further along in the scheduling process. But I do anticipate the need for at least an additional point two in English language arts in some way. This is no surprise to superintendent, we've been talking about it for a while. We have, we reduced that position some time ago in order to shore up another department, but that's something, that was a full-time position until last year. So it's something we're going to have to probably adjust for as we get incoming class of, next year's incoming class of ninth graders will be larger and so we'll need to be prepared for that than the outgoing class of 12th graders. And the other piece that just be prepared for is the, for all of us is the retail requirements, the licensure requirements for our staff. We have our own mandates and expectations and priorities that we place on staff, but the state has also mandated certain things that are, I think Sue Pettengill gave you a presentation about this, our EL language coordinator, last week or was it a couple weeks back?
February.
Yeah. We're going to have to prepare for that. All of us, including administrators, have, our license will be tied to professional development in English language arts, I mean, English language learner programs. So that's something that we're going to have to balance as we ask more faculty and make sure that we're providing the opportunities to receive appropriate professional development for ELL, English language learners. So just to, I want to give you a couple of highlights of what's ahead. We're also very interested in the flipped classroom that Mark spoke very well about. So we're going to be learning from the middle school. That collaboration is really important. One of the high school faculty was just talking about a middle school faculty member she had talked to in the last month and was very impressed by what's going on in her classroom and would like to learn from her. So again, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. I tried to blitz through it because I know you've had a long night with the various presentations. Hopefully I didn't go too fast.
Thank you.
Did you want to be first?
No.
I have two. One, you should have just breezed past the park and I wouldn't have had to ask my question here. But you said four of the Algebra II classes. How many Algebra II classes do we have?
All of our Algebra II classes.
So the selected sample is statistically 100% of our, I'm just getting a little frustrated by how much sampling they need for statistically valid sampling.
For our school, they say-
Hundred percent is typically not considered-
All of our Algebra II students, that's correct.
Sample.
And but for, and for our English one, we are also, our English one classes have been chosen, but not all of them, just three. The three that haven't been chosen.
And then the other one, you mentioned about the community service things there for the students to track, there are things there. Have you looked at things for people to make known opportunities for use of community service? You know, I'm thinking like, we talked one time, like the CPAC needed help on getting like their events set up and things like that. Sort of an inverse portal for people to let you know where they may have community service options and may be looking for students.
Yeah, the posting of different opportunities of where you can potentially, something that, not just a list of, there's a list already that we already have of places that routinely you can, where you can provide community service. You can go to this organization. But that's something where people could post things, like provide opportunities?
I don't know. I'm just thinking, you know, there's, you know, generally council and agent could use help, but maybe they may have some very specific requests that might come up, that it might be helpful for the students to see that, you know, that there might be a specific opportunity that they might be, I don't know.
Places of strength. There's a carpentry project and this, you know, the student really likes to do carpentry and she knows that it's available.
Perfect match it up. Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Just something to, you know, to consider as yet another new initiative.
No, but that's, you know, that's just, that's something that, we've actually-
Database.
Right, yeah. And actually the resident expert on community service right now is here with us because Deidre has delved into, we talked about learning from other districts, she's contacted at least two that I know of, two big ones in the area that have really, you know, impressive community service programs and how they manage it, not only because they have the numbers, a lot more students than us in terms of enrollment, but also just how they manage it online. So we're trying to learn from how they, how they post their information and how they track it. And so Deidre has all kinds of ideas that we're in developmental stages, I think of talking about it, probably not as, moving along as fast as she'd like. of talking about it, probably not as, moving along as fast as, as she'd like, but I know she's been patient with, with me as, and with us as we try to, you know, deal with everything that's going on. And so I think what, we look back a year or two from now on where community service was, say in 2013 versus where it is in 2015, we're going to see a lot, a very, much more impressive model that perhaps could be a model for other schools in the area too.
Thank you.
Very good, Alex. All right, three tips of the hat and then a question. Firstly, since we're just talking about the community services, long, you know, long time coming and it's a great job, I know the school council has done a lot of work on that, and you as well. About schedule study group, tough call, but I think it's a good decision. We were talking about teachers being, and, and the administrators being so overburdened by all the different initiatives, programs, state mandates, federal mandates, federal programs going on, and I think, you know, some things do have to be rescheduled as it were.
Yes.
Wireless network finally installs, that's been also a long time coming, and I think we should also just thank the technology department for all their hard work there, because I know they've spent countless hours with the old system trying to keep it up and running.
Oh my gosh. You remember as a student, we'd go down every day.
Yeah, I mean, they were basically.
It was down.
Yeah, they were basically, you know, using a string and, I don't know, like paper clippers, so to pull this thing together, and it's great that we finally have a system that works.
This is what happened, we don't have that daily or almost, well, it was a weekly announcement when you were a student, we don't have that anymore, it's.
And that means that our tech staff can focus on helping teachers better integrate technology or helping students with, with questions that they have, and that's a good, a good thing we do. My only question that I have for you tonight is regarding action item 14, which is the curriculum update. We talked about computer science, in the school improvement plan, there's also mentioned the Mandarin and the financial literacy.
Yes.
Where are we on that?
Well, because we're, they're in discussion stages. The Mandarin, we had a little pilot program with Mandarin last year, learned a lot from that experience. We've deferred that because we want to sort of find out where we are with French too before we start. You know, we, we really have, we're very proud of our French teacher, she's done a remarkable job in her two years with us so far, and she's really making an active effort to recruit and develop that program, so we don't want to hinder her efforts, want to see where she goes with that. It's going to take a little time, because there were some adjustments a few years back when we were having some budget trouble where we sort of let things go, so we have to sort of see how that develops, but she's doing a nice job there. At the same time, although we would like to offer additional languages, we also have to think of our other priorities as we manage increased enrollment, and our staple courses need to be taken care of first, mathematics, English, I've already mentioned specifically. Before adding a Mandarin section, I would want to shore up the ELA program with an additional point two. If we were getting a point two, we wouldn't be going to Mandarin, that would be my recommendation to you as a school committee. It would be to, you know, make sure we have, you know, our English program where it needs to be first. And with financial literacy, I know there's been some article sharing going around across administrators and maybe perhaps across school community members, I know from the superintendent I talked about it. We, there are, this came up, I think it'll, a previous school committee not too long ago about wanting to offer additional electives, and there are things that we definitely want to venture into. And one of those areas was economics a few years back, and I think that came about probably your junior or senior year.
I was gone by then.
Yeah, okay. Well, we off, now we have, you know, economics. So we, when we look at the financial literacy course, we'd like to see how, how would that complement or match up with that. I am talking to the PTA about doing something for an extracurricular effort to raise students' awareness around financial literacy, perhaps partnering with a local financial institution, credit union, a bank. There are, a lot of those partnerships are happening in other school, other communities. It's in my, it's very much alive and well in my community where I, where I live, and they're, they, they actually help provide curriculum and things like that. But of course, we have to screen that out, make sure that, as one PTA member cautioned me, make sure it's not just an advertisement for that bank. A few years ago, I guess about 15 years ago, it was tried here in Littleton, and there was some, you know, some perceptions of people in the community that was more of an advertising vehicle for the local institution, I forget what it was. So I think, you know, that's an area we want to grow in, there's no question that it's a life skill, it's an important skill, especially as our students go and try to manage the, just general life, you know, finances and try to get prepared for, make good decisions about taking on debt. So it's something we would like to offer, but there are other areas that we want to make sure we, we shore up first.
Sure.
Before we would propose it, but very much interested, we just need staffing.
Right, right. It speaks well to the, the many needs we have and our very limited resources, so thank you for handling that in that way.
Quick comment about the financial institutions. I, I, I mentioned, was that the last school committee meeting or a couple ago about, I've had some conversations with local institutions. They're reaching out to the, the town offices as well to do some, some work with town employees, so it might be something we can roll out to the teachers and then, you know, really form a partnership. So stay tuned.
Thanks.
You bet. Couple comments. The, when you were talking about the NEASK.
Yes.
The project continuing into the fall as far as the advisory period, there's, there's a lot of stuff online about advisory periods and, you know, how to use them to the best, to the maximum. I, you just talked about stealing from other districts, have you asked NEASK? I'm sure they, they're saying you should be doing something different with advisory.
They give us a lot of.
Ask the question, you know, of any districts that you could use as a model.
Right. And what, in the early state, in our conversations so far, we, we're looking at models that would be not so much the, we have an advisory period that we call it right now in the morning, but it's really a home room, where we do the pledge, we do a moment of silent reflection, and we do announcements and chances to re, to regroup and get started for the day with the, with the teacher. So what we're looking at doing a little bit differently is trying to make sure that we keep the relationship with the teacher and the student over a period of time. We mixed it up a little bit, we, we had added our advisory to our A mod this past year, that was a changed, it was pilot experiment based on the recommendation from some faculty members who wanted us to try this. It's mixed reviews about whether, you know, to do that. So what we're looking to do next year, and we probably will hit this with the ground, you know, hit the ground running, and it'll be in the sort of the August letter, welcoming students and parents back to school. We would like to, we'll keep, we have to keep our daily home room period, but with our advisory model, what we'd like to do is either every other month or every month have some type of advisory, you might remember if, they used to call it activity periods?
Yeah.
And that's what a lot of schools do, and that's how they meet the NEASK requirement. It, it's a chance to get our students to connect with faculty members and with each other on a regular, routine basis. Be less disruptive to the schedule.
I don't necessarily need all the, all the particulars right now, but I just want to reach out.
Okay.
There's a lot of districts that are doing things.
That's the one we're interested in.
Okay.
Yep.
There's a lot of districts that are doing it, doing it successfully, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You mentioned something about MCAS, and the teachers have done a great job of getting the kids ready for the test. If it's preparation, I think it's great, but I just want to caution us on teaching to the test and, you know, it's, it's the age old. And I've felt it this year for, for some of my kids, that they, they felt it, that they were, they were being taught to in order to perform better on the test. Preparing the children for the test is certainly something we absolutely should be, it's our obligation, but just want to caution all the administration and the staff, you know, that it's, it's a tool.
Yes.
Although it's, it will be used in the future, a little bit differently, but.
Yeah.
When the kids are feeling stressed out about it, I think we're, we're missing the message a little bit. There's one other thing. Oh, no, I just wanted to comment on Dan Hogan was part of that duct tape and wriggly scum that was holding that, that wireless system together in the past, so thank you for that. And as far as the, the course selection being on Aspen, speak for my own kids. They feel more connected to their own learning.
Yep.
Having, being able to go online and do the course selection, yeah, so it's, it's, that's, that's just a tip of the hat.
Thank you for that.
To Aspen. But thank you, John, appreciate it.
Appreciate comments.
Just have one question. We're doing a lot to improve both the technology in the school and the course selection of our students out. Are we going to begin to think about offering an MCAS technology test so that students who have an inclination in that regard, I believe there is one, right? You can use that instead of the science requirement?
I think you're talking about the science and technology engineering exam?
I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm not sure, if I, make sure I understand your question. Are you talking about a different version of the MCAS test?
Right, like if you didn't want to take biology or physics or chemistry, I believe there's a technology one.
I can answer that.
I don't know what it's named.
Uh, right, there is a science and technol, it's called the STE, it's a science, technology, engineering test, and it's based on a specific curriculum, and we would have to, that would be an additional course that we would have to offer at the high school to prepare kids for that test. With the likely phasing out of MCAS in 2018, we are, it would not be my recommendation to the school committee or the superintendent to adopt another MCAS test at the high school. We are preparing for the transition to PARC, which would be, you know, will bring up, present a host of issues as we try to adjust for that. So I think right now our students have done a really stellar job with the biology test over the past few years, have really led the way actually in their performance on that. You know, if we wanted to make comparisons, and so I think, I, I hear what you're saying that there might be an interesting option that, you know, in the ninth grade year to offer, I think that's where you're sort of getting to.
Well, I think that you just have students with different skills, right?
Yep.
And they may not be good in, I don't know if you call it traditional sciences, but maybe the hands-on engineering might be something they have a better aptitude for, so they might.
Right now, yeah, our engineering program, and thanks, you mentioned Dan Hogan earlier, Dan is going to take on the engineering course next year, he'll be teaching engineering one and two, and he brings with him years of industry experience and we're grateful to have him in that position. That is going to be a, an elective for, for older students, you know, for juniors and seniors perhaps, you know, mainly. I'll see if he wants to bring it down to younger students, but it's really generally a junior, senior elective. And so what we have to do to address your concern, there would be adding additional course, and right now, it's, it's not on the table for next year or two to add an engineering or, you know, I get what you're saying about the hands-on piece, Dan and I have had extensive discussions about the, the value of that for students. There's no question about it, it would be a resource issue, it would be a spacing issue as well as a curriculum and a staffing issue. So at this point, there's lots, I hear you, we'd have to, lots to look at.
Well, and we have students now coming from the middle school ready for that program, and you're saying they're going to.
We have students ready to for.
Well, I'm saying in the middle school, we're doing more and more to ready our students, right? And they have opportunities now with engineering or the code program or VHS, and now we bring them to the high school, and I understand you, you really can't take an engineering class now until you're a junior.
Right.
Right, so now we have a gap where we've got these kids wrapped up and ready to go.
That's true.
And.
It's a gap that has existed, it's not a new gap, it's a gap that has existed for a long time. And so as we look at additional course offerings to meet the needs of our different students and their different interests, we need to factor that all into our budgetary decision-making. So, you know, I'm happy to, to look in further into that and discuss it, you know, with the school committee and superintendent.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Good job. Any closing statements?
Sure, I'll be very brief since we've. Your hour went a little long.
No, I didn't.
You guys blew my record tonight. It was way off. Yes. I'm very proud of what our district is doing and the work that our teachers are doing, our students are doing, and the leadership team. One thing we don't talk a lot about, and sometimes you have to save those discussions for pivotal moments, is that a lot of school districts throughout the nation, throughout the world, have been injecting technology into their classrooms and have been very unsuccessful. And they've been unsuccessful because they fail to realize the relationship between curriculum and pedagogical preparation and technology. In our district, right from day one when we started injecting technology, we, we realized that we needed to convert what we call an industrialized curriculum to a 21st century learning environment. And that's not easily done, in fact, some theorists say that it can't be done, but it can be done, we've done it, and it's been done in many other areas. We've always looked at, at first of all, 21st century skills, it's not a separate curriculum, it's a curriculum of every program or discipline that we offer. We've also purchased technology with the expectation that the ISTI standards be actualized. And what those three things together do is it moves that curriculum away from the industrialized format to a curriculum that is alive and engaging. And we've made great strides in three years, despite the fact that, that we've been going more and more back towards what I call an essentialistic paradigm, which simply means we have more testing. So I, I commend our staff and our leadership team for sticking to the guns, so to speak, and realizing that this is a way with the future. We are becoming a learning, a learning community. More than that, we're becoming what we call a learning society. So we're on the right road, and I'm looking forward to future accomplishments as we keep converting our curricula over to, to the direction that it needs to go. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
It was a very enjoyable evening, listening to, to all of the goals, and Principal Zeddol, yes, every now and again I do raise a hair on his back deliberately, of course. And one of my jobs as a superintendent is, is to make sure that we remain cutting edge and at the same time be cognizant of what we can do and what we cannot do. And in that conversation, which won't die, is again continuation of 21st century integration as a, as a curriculum component of every class that we teach. Some way of identifying student preparation in regards to ISTI standards. And the third one is, is some culinary check in terms of 21st century skills as they leave each school, so that we can be assured that as our students progress through our educational system, by the time they're ready for graduation, we're confident that they have the skillsets that they need to be successful. And we will be continuing with those discussions, and, and again, this has been a very action-packed year, and I think we've done a very good job of realizing when we're at the edge and pull back a bit, and, and we just need to continue to, to monitor what's happening within our classrooms every day. So again, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So at 8:10, we're going to.
I was really off target on this one.
I blame, I blame the.
Fortunately, that's not one of the rubics that we're.
Anyway.
If it was, we would have been done. I guarantee it.
That's right. All right, so next up on our old business, I'd like to see if we can get an update on the Shaker Lane.
Sure. So we discussed this a couple, we discussed this a couple meetings ago, the issue with the Shaker Lane, and the school zone lights, how they're very unreliable, and we've had a number of issues with them, I think for years now, and we're trying to figure out how to, how to move forward. I had reached out the last time we just, I had mentioned at the last time we discussed this, that I would reach out to Mass DOT. I spoke with Barry Laurin, who's the district engineer for District Three at Mass DOT, and it's not a state road, so they're not going to run any tests for us, but I think Daryl had, had some concerns that if we invest the money in making a change in the equipment, that we actually want it to prove that it changes something. We don't want it to just be changing the lights and have there be no effect either because people are already slowing down, even if the lights aren't going off when they need to be, or because when the lights are going off when they need to be, people won't slow down anyway. That would be, you know, another issue that we might need to handle in that, in that way. So we did discuss different ways of how to go about doing that. Essentially, what we might have to do is have, you know, hopefully one of our other town departments help us administer a sort of, not necessarily a study, wouldn't be the, the right term, but just sort of an experiment to see when the lights are on, do people slow down? When the lights are off, do people, are people going the speed limit anyway? So that's sort of something that we will be, I will be interfacing with LPD to see if they would be willing to help us out on that.
So actually, Alex, we, we talked about this at our safety meeting two weeks ago there, so the game plan that we talked about there, I wasn't aware you were, had feedback on the things there, is right now the, I believe the lights are not functioning properly.
Actually, they are back on.
You were going to request repair.
They are back, they are back on and on schedule as far as we know.
Right, so what we're going to do is, is we're going to fix them this time again. We talked to our school resource officer who was going to interface appropriate channels through the police department and do some informal speed monitoring in the area to see what the effect of the lights are on it. He reported informally here that it's known that our lights are unreliable and we, we probably lose the tickets when they go to court on them because they claim that the lights aren't reliable, it's.
It's known that our lights aren't reliable, so a lot of people informally get passed on the tickets. He doesn't have firm stats on it, but he's been our in-court on some of these, uh, things here. So, we're going to first determine whether the flashing is effective or not, uh, there. If the flashing is not really effective, we're not required to have the dynamic sign that we're, we have there. We can have just a posted school zone sign, which is a static sign. And probably that may be a better recommendation, because that, once it gets posted and it's, and there's no reliable, reliability issue, because it'll say, "When students are present, school speed zone 25 miles an hour." Uh, there's no question about what the speed limit is during school hours, uh, at that, versus an unreliable sign, which, if I understood, the cost is about $1,600 a time for us to send somebody out to repair it? If that was the number that you had approximately quoted.
Yeah, that's sub.
So it's significant maintenance money for us to do the sign, and if we lose tickets also, so it has no effect, we're probably, we may need to revisit the thing. So, we're, we're waiting for the rec, the report back from, uh, the police on, uh, what the informal monitoring was. They were going to do it in an, you know, unannounced time, so people wouldn't know to slow down.
So don't flash your lights.
Uh, there, so we're, I, I'm expecting at our next safety meeting to get a, get some feedback on, uh, where that is. But it is possible that the recommendation may be to switch that to a static sign versus the flashing sign, uh, there.
Well, we're also, if I may, we're also trying to reach out to the, the Littleton Electric Department to find, to see if they can help us determine why, um, those flashing lights seem to be losing power, um, on an irregular basis. I think that's part of the issue, so, um, we're not sure what the issue is, but we're looking into that to see if that is one of the issues. So when they lose power, they lose programming, and then they have to be reset and reprogrammed and all that kind of stuff, so, very frustrating.
I like the static sign idea.
Well, thank you, everybody, for, uh, being on top of this. It'll be nice to, to have some answers as we move forward.
Agreed. All right. What's the superintendent's report?
Moving right along. Chloe, obviously, wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'll just, uh, quickly talk about two events. Last night, the Class of 2015 held a silent auction, it was, uh, very well attended, and, uh, they did very well in terms of raising funds. I wasn't as lucky at that one as I was at Shaker Lane for some reason, but, uh, you can't be, you can't win all the time.
Was there no cakewalk?
No cakewalk on that one. But, uh, it was very well organized, very well done, so, uh, thank you to the Class of 2015. On April 7th, uh, we will be holding, uh, a spaghetti lunch with the Council on Aging. And we're expecting, uh, we had a sign-up of 75, uh, people attending that lunch, so we're excited to resurrect a spaghetti dinner that, uh, I guess existed many, many years ago. Uh, when talking to, uh, the director of the Council on Aging, uh, she had mentioned that, uh, she still hears about it, so we decided to, uh, work with them and resurrect it. So we have, uh, our music teacher providing some music during the luncheon, and, uh, we have some students circulating and, uh, meeting with, uh, the seniors within the community. And, uh, we're really excited about getting them in our high school and showcasing some of the things that we're doing.
That's great. I have a quick question, Dr. Branko, when is the soccer, Dr. Branko, the Friday night soccer kick-out? Is that a week from this Friday, a week from tomorrow?
Really?
Oh, sorry.
Well, he's looking that up, I'll say that this weekend is Little Mermaid.
Yes.
Which is the middle school production at the high school. So it's Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. All the, all the performances are at the Performing Arts Center at the high school. Little Mermaid.
Excellent.
Go see it three times.
You can just get back to me.
The 28th.
Or 28th, I'll get that week from.
Mall of UNs, yes, I think it's called, uh, New York? Oh, the mattress sale?
Yeah, the band, uh, Philo Bridge has coordinated. A fundraiser for the, for the band program. Uh, that's this Saturday.
This Saturday.
At the high school cafeteria.
Yep.
It's a mattress sale fundraiser, so if you need new.
I was curious, are the mattresses going to be there, or you order the mattresses?
The mattresses are there for you to try.
I believe you.
Okay.
But I don't walk out the mattress.
You order them there.
I was just going to know if I gotta bring some bungee cords or.
Couple of suns.
No, I believe that there, you can look at them and then you.
We also have the, um, 504 presentation Monday night, uh, March 24th is coming Monday at 7 o'clock at the high school, and the community is invited to that to understand, um, what the 504 plan is all about.
That's great.
And that will be presented by Andrea Bell, one of the lawyers from the Stone and Chandler Services, our district.
Excellent. Did you, did you catch that, Kurt? Were you able to hear that? Okay.
Information.
No, you, you need not. Kind of an open, uh, Chloe session, does anybody else have? No, we're good, Rich, nothing going on, we're good.
No, um, kindergarten screenings next week.
Okay.
No big events happening.
On Wednesday?
This week, we're looking forward to see the snow.
Continue to melt.
Not the only ones.
Is it Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday.
Does snow next week?
So kindergarten screening next week is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
All right. Did, do you have anything to offer under Interested Citizens?
Oh, no, I think you've hit all the events that I know about.
I thought you'd be going to Interested Citizens on the, uh, we've got a couple things on superintendent's report. Uh, I'm sorry. All right, stop yelling now. Do you want, do you want the?
He can only handle a one-hour meeting, he can't be chair for a two-hour meeting.
It puts way over my expected life, my life expectancy.
Financial report is included in your package, and, uh, again, utilizing the cost center approach, nothing new since the last time that we've talked to. We've postponed the food service report, uh, until next meeting. We've had three auditors, uh, floating through our office, uh, during last week and this week.
And a staff personnel, so we're a little.
Decided to postpone it until next meeting.
Any, any questions on the financials at all, I mean, we're.
Same as last.
Yeah, same concerns, uh, we're watching the same three areas, uh, we're watching them, and, uh, you know, we are concerned, but I, you know, I believe we'll be able to handle it, um, we're watching it. But overall, the budget's fine.
One thing I would ask, I don't think we've touched upon special ed, we've generally focused on the transportation and the food services. Special ed is up a hair, is there anything we need to worry about, or is that?
Uh, no, you have to remember, it's, it, it looks like it's up on this report, because part of the special ed is the case assessment, and so we prepay that through the year. Um, so, we've already prepaid for the case program through the year, uh, so, and that's reflected in these numbers.
So we're not looking at, we're not going to overspend?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to be interested, Interested Citizens out of order, just, we talk in acronyms a lot.
Yes.
And, uh, one of the things I just want to clarify is ISTI, is the International Society of Technology and Education.
Yes.
So, we're all those.
Excellent.
Stop it. All right, so, we're on to the subcommittee reports, anything with PMDC, Alex?
Nope.
Budgets up good?
Uh, we have not met since we gave the, uh, presentation last week.
All right, I'd like to table the budgets up, can you give a little bit of an update on, kind of, where we're at, and maybe take a look on some action? Based on what we.
Right. Right. I mean, we're basically, so what's happened is, is that, you know, we've, we presented and voted our budget, and I think we talked about, I know we talked about this last meeting, the next step is for the school committee, the board of selectmen, the finance committee, to make a determination about how we're going to go to town meeting floor to present the overall town budget. And there are, there's still quite a bit of dialogue that needs to take place relative to, uh, how the overall budget in the town will be funded, and there's a lot of different ways we can go. And there's some significant discussion going on about how we will use our circuit breaker account, because there's some debate going on about different standards for requirements about how we spend and when we spend that circuit breaker money down. There's specific guideline, not guideline, specific, uh, rules and regulations relative to, uh, both the DESE and the DOR, some more acronyms, Department of Revenue, Department of.
Elementary and Secondary Education.
Both have oversight on, on circuit breaker and town funds in general. So, we're dialoguing back and forth with the town admin, finance admin team, and of course, ultimately, you know, they give guidance and they, they, you know, but ultimately, it'll be the determination of the school committee, the board of selectmen, and the finance committee about how we will, uh, proceed at town meeting, so, um, I don't feel like we need to change anything tonight. There's no, no voting, no discussion needs to be had relative to the budget that we voted. As far as we can tell, the discussions that we're having, that number is, is solid. The question is more along the lines of how we're going to fund it versus appropriation and use of revolving funds. And there is a potential, uh, depending on how we, we, uh, what determinations are made prior to and/or after town meeting, that we can conceivably vote to reduce and/or increase the budget, uh, depending on what transpires. So, and somewhat could be related to, you know, there's still information coming out of the State House relative to, uh, local aid in Chapter 70 as they go through their budget process, which is normal.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I prepared just kind of a brief summary, just, uh, in the, uh, on, kind of, where we're at and some of the discussions we've had. And, the chairman, Mr. Bell, had actually, uh, presented some information to the town administrator, to the board of selectmen, and to FinCom. And, uh, basically, our, our budget, the school committee's FY15 budget that we presented last week, that we did, I presented last week, I, I watched it after the fact, because I, I missed it live, so, thanks. But, um, it was all received by, uh, members of the FinCom, the town administrator. Uh, the overall town budget has about a $300,000 to $600,000 delta, uh, between expected revenues and proposed budget. You're right, Mike, there was some discussion on, uh, $269,000 in, uh, circuit breaker reserve, and whether or not any of it should be used for closing the town's overall, uh, the delta. And we acknowledge the need to continue discussions, as you mentioned. And, one of the things that we discussed was offering $90,000 to go toward the overall delta, try to address the overall delta. The FY15 budget does not address all of our, all the district's needs. Director of Pupil Services has indicated the need for additional student support services. And, um, this was reinforced by NIOSC recommendations and Comprehensive Management Review Recommendation, CMR review. Superintendent endorsed this need for additional student support services as our district's number-one need. And, school committee authorized the superintendent to address the identified needs for student support services. The current budget proposals coming from Beacon Hill show Chapter 70 increase of $38,000 with no word on assessment to the town, assessments to the town. Net gain can be less than $38,000. But as I mentioned, the chair wrote some letters, one of them was to Senator Elbridge, the other was to Rep., another to Rep. Arciero, asking for their support in addressing, uh, an increase in Chapter 70 and not to increase assessments. He also wrote to the board of selectmen and FinCom about Chapter 70, the $38,000 bump, and requested that it remain with the schools. In that letter to the board of selectmen, the chairman also added that the school committee would offer up this $90,000 toward, from circuit breaker, toward the town's overall budget delta, and an amount of, uh, $70,000 would be allocated to the student support services, remaining circuit breaker revolving fund to be held in reserve. So, that's kind of a synopsis, and whether or not we want to move forward tonight in, in the form of a motion. It's kind of open for, uh, some discussion.
I was going to say, just two comments on a couple of things there. So, if I read the email chain from the state today correctly, they, the, the senate also agreed to go forward with the same, um, Chapter 70 numbers as the house did, so, I think they're there. But on one hand, they give it, and the other hand, they take it away, uh, there. If I did the math right, um, we actually end up with $24,000 less in Chapter 70, because they increased our assessments. You know, so, yeah, we got $44,000 more in Chapter 70, but they, our assessments went up $68,000. So we end up actually having less Chapter 70 funding coming into the town. So it's kind of interesting on how they're preserving it for the towns, and then we end up actually with less money in the, in the net there. And if I understood the chairman's letter, it wasn't the school committee had authorized this, it was, I think, to foster the, the dialogue with the other boards, uh, there. Yeah, you know, and I think, if I understood, um, the intent was for us to discuss it here to see if, if that's the direction we want to continue down with the superintendent, because I, I know there's, looks like there's lots more dialogue that needs to occur, and I think some of it's going to occur between, sort of, our, you know, between the chair and this, and the superintendent, because these are happening in real time, uh, there. And I don't know, are they looking for some direction and guidances, or, or just are we down the right? Are they going down the right path and we're looking for endorsement of that? Uh, I guess I'm looking for what you're looking for out of a motion. Well, no, I mean, it's, I, I'm not prepared to change our budget. I'm prepared to authorize us continuing the dialogues with the town, because we need to help close that budget gap.
I agree, I don't see a motionable path here.
Okay.
Uh, the budget, nobody's talking, not least of all us, nor the board of selectmen or the FinCom are talking about changing the budget that we voted. There's been no discussion about, "That's too much money," or, "Gee, you could spend even more if you wanted to." Uh, right now, it's, it's, there, everybody seems okay with that number. Again, the question is, is how are we going to appropriate money to, to fund that budget? And not just ours, but the overall town budget? Because you talked about, there is a gap, you know, being put forth by the, uh, town admin, finance admin team. So there is a significant amount of dialogue that's going to occur. We've made one very general suggestion relative to, you know, we are relying on revolving funds to a degree already in the budget, but we have room conceivably to be, you know, to go move that number, if that would be, if that would overall help the town and, and we're willing to have that dialogue. But that's, to me, that's not motionable, that's just, you know, we're already going to do some of that, it's just a question of how much. So I think it's, you know, I think the, the direction would be, yes, to continue to dialogue with the board of selectmen, the finance committee, the, uh, finance admin team on the town side, and keep us appraised, so that we know whether or not we do need to contemplate a motion.
I think that's what I'd be comfortable with, that we're providing direction that we recognize we will be out of the loop for perhaps a week or two until we have our next full meeting, uh, there. But, you know, between, I'm comfortable with the chair and the superintendent proceeding down those discussions, uh, there.
And it's entirely possible that the budget subcommittee, we, we're still scheduled to meet, we will meet, and that'll be.
Right.
Really, that's exactly what I would expect us to be talking about as a body now, is that we've got the budget voted, is, you know, what's, uh, what are our alternatives, options, what's the, uh, opportunity cost of one, one course of action versus another?
And then you'll, through this, by the end of this process, there'd be something, if there's a specific request back to the full committee here, that we'd be looking for.
Well, I, I can guarantee you that whether or not, I, this is what's happened in the past. We voted a budget, we've never revoted a budget, that I remember. We've always gone to town meeting with the initial vote, we've never had to, and that's a good sign, that's, that's good management, that we've never had to, to revote a budget. What has happened is, is that our strategy, our strategy and the town's strategy for funding the overall budget has changed up to and even subsequent to town meeting. That's just normal practice. So that's exactly what will happen over the next couple of months and beyond conceivably, is that dialogue will happen. And you're right, some of it will happen offline, where we won't be a part of, because it has to happen day in and day out.
Exactly.
Um, as to, you know, we get closer and closer to that town meeting deadline. But, you know, like you said, this superintendent and the, in the, uh, the chair are charged with, you know, having those kinds of conversations with the other chairs and other departments. So that'll happen as it normally does, the budget subcommittee will continue to meet, and we'll be kept appraised of what our, what we think is a good strategy and, and what the repercussions of decisions that might be made are, so.
Because I wasn't prepared to discuss exactly how we would use individual sub-elements of the finance there, and I kind of would like to have a full.
You almost can't, because it's not.
No, 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 exactly, that's.
Because it's not, it's, you know, we can come up with overall, you know, and we have with general strategy about, we know what our, our revolving account balances are right now, what they're projected to be, and we've talked about that in our joint meetings with the board of selectmen and the FinCom. So they're, they're cognizant of that as well. So we just need to keep having that dialogue, but, uh, you know, I think we'll be fine as we move forward.
I was just feeling a little bit like Alexander Haig, so.
Well, no, I mean, you, you know, and I guess I'd ask the superintendent, do you have sufficient guidance from the board as a whole? Or do you need, um, do you, do you need something more specific?
No, not at this time, I, I just felt it, or the chairman and I felt it was important that we have this discussion, uh, this evening, and there are many variables, uh, and there, there are many ways to, to, uh, deal with, uh, our needs also in terms of compliance. So, uh, this is, certainly fits what I expected tonight for. not in the right way, it's actually private property there. So we, the committee, and I think Pablo came back to you to talk about paying a personal visit, not sending a letter, you know, visiting the new owners down there and talking to them about the visibility concerns and see if, you know, a personal visit would be a little bit more effective than some kind of...
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Well, meet your neighbors. I mean, you talked about, and other things there about going over to talk to...
Going to try and do trips. Pair of clippers.
While we joke, there was no desire nor intent to make it look like we were telling them they had to do something, we were going to ask them for their cooperation, cooperation and help in this. I mean, we make fun of it here, but I mean, I think we're very serious and concerned about how we, how we reach out to our neighbors, not only for this, but, you know, you mentioned also the need to visit Pastor at St. Anne and some of the others for some other initiatives that we're doing there. And I think that personalized reach out and talk to them approach would be much more effective in these types of things, so...
Sorry.
Well, no, somebody can be...
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Could be very upset if they thought that we were strong-arming them into doing something and that's not the intent.
Yep, absolutely.
Did you want to talk at all? Do you have anything more than...
No, that was, that was the highlights out of the meeting, it was a fairly short meeting.
Okay. I had a question with the intersection. In that letter that Mass DOT sent back, they also sort of called into question our ability to have our crossing guard there, our traffic guard there. Nearly has done so much.
We're working through the police department with all of those issues there, so we, I didn't, we went through all of the, all of the issues on there. I just didn't, I don't have resolution on all of them here at this point.
I just didn't want to make you think...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else to add, Bob or...
Oh, actually, just because it did come up at the safety meeting, it came up at the board of selectmen meeting, there is, I think the town is also, I think the administrator, Keith Bergman, mentioned that maybe there's other things too with the new complete streets policy, whether that might help influence that improvements in that area need to be made. We pointed out that the crosswalk makes at least three crossings, so it's not a pedestrian-friendly, you know, they cited us for not having any crossing, people crossing it. Well, it's virtually impossible to walk to school down that street there on it, so given that they have the complete streets policy, we'll see if that has any influence in the thing there, so we'll have to try to figure out what the exact follow-up is on that.
I'm going to pause. Okay, you're done.
I'm done.
Charlie, you have anything to add?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I understand a motion to adjourn up if we have any need for executive session?
I make my motion to adjourn.
Motion to be made to adjourn?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, say good luck by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Little Mermaid this weekend.